Be nine o'clock.
I'm ready. Maurice, can we change the slide for Freddie?
Good morning. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law and sections 101.021 of the codified ordinance of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice that this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city planning department conducts its meetings according to Robert's rules of order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activate it by clicking on the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. Call-in users can unmute by using star six. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter via our website and email have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Freddie. Michael call the roll, please.
Owen.
Present.
Downing.
President.
Luca.
Present.
Curry.
President.
McCray Scott.
President.
Paul. Slide. Mr. Chairman, we do have a call.
Thank you, and I see Charles is on. I didn't hear him, but I see that he's on. We have a very full agenda, so if everyone can move quickly through their presentation so we can get to the questions and move on to other matters on the docket, I would appreciate it. The first is the zoning map amendment. It's a numbered, unnumbered ordinance changing the use area and height district of parcels of land bounded by Detroit Avenue, the Cuyahoga River, Carnegie Avenue, and West 25th Street and adding an urban farm overlay district. So I, I have a legal opinion that I don't have a conflict of this, but since something's been written about it, I'm gonna recuse myself from this meeting and Lillian Curry is gonna chair the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, good morning. A quick question, though, since this is a zoning matter. I, I just wanna check with you, Freddie, that I should have the presenters present and then take testimony from those in favor and those opposed in a normal zoning, yes, even that is a map amendment. Okay. So, is that correct?
Yes, but I would like to say for the record, this is a zoning matter that the commission had seen previously and approved. This is coming back because there's been an amendment to the actual map to exclude a parcel that was not meant to be included in this rezoning. So I wanna just state that for the record.
Okay, so we won't be seeing the whole thing. We will just be seeing the exclusion in the context of the whole, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you for that. So the way it'll work is we will have the staff present, and then we will take testimony from anyone who wishes to speak, first in favor and then opposed to the matter. And I'll ask, since it's a zoning matter, that if you are speaking, use the raise the hand feature and you state your name and address clearly for the record. So with that, let's go ahead and who is presenting from the staff?
I think Moss will be presenting the actual zoning presentation. It's about two slides.
Thank you, Director. Commission members, I'm happy to walk through this. We have the whole presentation that was presented last time, but since it has been presented, I'll move through it really quickly and happy to answer any questions at the end. And so as, as was stated, this is a rezoning that was seen before. This is in the flats. We're looking at the area between West 25th, Columbus, and on Carter Road. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this map change to remind everyone is to facilitate development of the new Irriktown Bend Park to permit residential uses by right in the flats, to leverage public assets and investments to spur new private investment and ensure that these new industrial, new non-industrial uses are compatible with existing industrial uses. And lastly, to ensure that new developments are advancing the city's walkability goals. Next slide, please. This is the mapped area, so there are two components, or sorry, there are three components to this map change. The first one is to revise some of the zoning map along West 25th and the riverfront to open space recreation. This is mostly the location of the new Irriktown Bend Park. It also includes an area in the flats. That's the future proposed Canal Basin Park. The second proponent is changing much of the general industry zoning in the flats to semi-industry. This would permit residential uses by right, and we're seeing projects right now going through the design reprocess and projects that have been proposed that have residential use, and so this would clear a pathway for them to obtain a building permit. And lastly, we wanna map the urban form overlay along many of these streets to preserve the walkable character that does exist and where there aren't buildings to add to that character and make, ensure that the flats remains a safe, walkable, and comfortable area for pedestrians. Next slide. So this is the open space recreation section. This is the section where we removed the properties at the corner of West 25th and Detroit Avenue. While the, those properties are still being discussed, we wanna proceed with this rezoning because there are other projects that are, that really require this map change order to move forward, and it would further align this area with our long-term plan for the city. Next slide. This shows the Irriktown Bend Park. We're all really familiar with this. Next slide. This is a area of park along the, along in the flats next to the Irriktown Bend area along Center Street Bridge. You can see the new Lincoln Trail connection there. Next slide. This is the site of the future proposed Canal Basin Park. This is the other component that would be rezoned to open space recreation. Next slide. This is the component of the, the general industry change to semi-industry, so this constitutes much of, much of the flats along Scranton Road, Carter Road, and Columbus. So there are a mix of industrial uses here. They would continue to exist as is, and industrial uses would also be permitted under the semi-industry district, but it would allow residential by right because it is currently prohibited in a general industry district. Next slide. So you can see the mix of uses down here. There are existing industrial users, like I mentioned, but there are other recreational uses. There are breweries opening, there are existing bars and restaurants, and some open space that is yet to be developed that we want to make sure can be developed in the appropriate way. Next slide. Here's a view on Carter Road. Again, it shows much of the Carter Peninsula. The Thunderbird site is an active development site. You can also see 1956 Carter Road up there, the Avian. That is now a location of BrewDog, which I believe is opening later today. Next slide. This slide shows why the urban form overlay is an important component of this, because we have these trail connections as a part of the towpath trail, these bridges that connect people in, and vice versa into and around the area into downtown and the surrounding neighborhoods. We wanna make sure that buildings continue to have that, that urban form, have that street wall, and support more walkable, support a more walkable built environment in this area. Next slide. This is just an overview of, of the, the main goals of the urban form overlay. Like I said, to support walkable neighborhoods and mixed-use districts, encourage alternative transportation methods, alternative to a car, and establish a strong urban form in the area. Next slide. And so summing up, that's the rezoning. It's a multifaceted approach, really, to try to make sure that this area continues to develop in the appropriate way and add to the city's urban form. Thank you.
Can I ask that you just clearly state what parts are new or the two that you described? But can you go back and just clearly state the amendment piece?
Sure. The zoning is exactly the same with the one exception of the parcels located at the corner of West 25th and Detroit Avenue. You can see that on the left slide, left side of this map. That is what has been removed and will remain in a local retail district. That zoning is not changing.
Okay.
Yes, where the cursor is indicating.
Got it. So first, we will take testimony of anybody in favor, proponents of the zoning change. Use the raise hand feature. Maurice, you can flag for me who they are, and we ask that you state your name. We will limit your comments to two minutes or less, and I will hold you to that, so you have two minutes to speak. Anybody in favor?
Melissa? We have Melissa with her hand raised.
Okay, Melissa, if you want to unmute yourself, state your name and address, and, and you can speak.
Oh, jeez, I did not mean to raise my hand. I didn't notice it was up.
Okay. So if there isn't anyone who's here to speak in favor of this?
We have, we have James now.
James?
Hi, my name is James Assimus. I am with a group that owns a parcel in the rezoning. We're 100% in favor of this and are excited at the zoning changes being proposed here.
Okay. And your name, your address, your, your, I mean, your relationship to the property?
Sure. Property ownership for 1736 Columbus Road.
Okay. Okay, thank you. There was a question in the chat. Yes, you can speak to the overall zoning or this amendment. So if you'd like to speak for, in favor, you can speak now, or if you're opposed, please go ahead. All right, doesn't seem like there's any other proponents. So now I'm going to ask if there is any opponents, anyone who would speak against this zoning matter, to go ahead and raise your hand, and Maurice will call on you.
And we have John Bystone.
Good morning. John Bystone, Metro Chief of Visionary for Braver's Company. As you may know, we own a parcel of land on Carter Road that the Southern Avenue has proposed. Not here to speak necessarily either way on the amendment.
I'm hearing you. I am, I'm having a hard time hearing and understanding.
Yeah, there's a tremendous amount of feedback coming from your system, sir.
Go ahead.
We thought it was David Bowen earlier, but apparently it was yours. He's typing.
Okay. If, are you gonna type your comments?
I think so.
Then maybe we can take any of, while you're typing, we'll take any other opponents, and then we'll reach, I'll read your comments once they're posted. So, anyone else who'd like to speak against the zoning change?
No hands raised.
Okay, so John, we'll wait for your comment, and, and then we'll close the public portion of the meeting. So. An applause does, might take a second. The question is, this is probably gonna be for Matt. So what does DR4 mean along Columbus Road? I don't know, Matt, if you can see the, the chat. Does it mean construction is permitted, and if yes, what is the building height?
Matt? I believe I can, Madam Chair, I can speak to that. The, so the, the DR refers to one of the rare zoning districts we have in our code is downtown residential. The four signifies the height district, which is 115 feet permitted of buildable height. And so under this zoning change, the height district will remain the same in that area, and it would be rezoned to a different use district. I'm sorry, yeah, thank you, Shannon. Shannon just posted in the chat, it's 175 feet for a four height district. And so that would remain a four, and it would change from a downtown residential district to a semi-industry district, which is a more permissive zoning district.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification. So, John, do you still oppose this matter with that answer, or do you just have a question?
He didn't oppose. It was just a general comment.
Just a general question. Okay, thank you. So we're gonna close the public portion and take comments from the commission members now. And so I'll ask if any of my fellow colleagues would like to ask any questions or make any comments.
Madam Chair, I move to approve. It's presented.
Nice second, Downing.
We have a motion and a second, and any other discussion? I do have a comment. It's not related to this specific parcel, but something that I brought up when the overall vision for the valley was, was presented, and so maybe this is to Freddie and to Matt. I still feel strongly that with an urban farm overlay of this size, especially when one of the major goals is kind of pedestrian access, that what's missing is riverfront access, which is still the most important piece of this, which is to use the urban form overlay to grandfather parcels, but any new parcels really providing a setback for riverfront promenade or access to the riverfront that's continuous. So for me, that is still missing from here, and I've asked for it. So I hope that you can clarify a timeline by which you'll come back with that, because honestly, that is the most important piece of this for me. I mean, there's a lot of important pieces, but if all is said and done in 15, 20 years from now, we have huge chunks of this that build new projects that don't have access. And I know you're working with them, but working with, with sort of property owners who are interested in that is different than ensuring over time that it is actually continuous riverfront access. So I've asked for it before. I still don't get an answer on when that might come back, and I'd really like you guys to address it. Seems like it should have been addressed here before when we saw it and I asked, but I don't know, Matt, Freddie, if you wanna address that.
Yeah, I can address that. First and foremost, that was a priority with respect to the recommendations from the Vision for the Valley. The second piece of that is we just held a technical assistance panel with the Everland Institute identifying the model ordinances that exist. Chicago is one that we're looking at to apply here. We do feel strongly also that we will be needing to engage property owners because we're going right now through a design guideline process with OHM advisors and a number of partners that includes Ohio City, Inc., etc. So we're well on our way to making sure from a regulatory standpoint that the valley is treated in a way where you do have pedestrian access. And I just wanna emphasize, you know, that is something we agree with, and that is something we're working on. And you had asked for giving you a timeline. What I can say to you is that the work is actually happening relatively rigorously. The timing of this zoning change, this is kind of low-hanging fruit in our mind with respect to making sure that the plans that are going on right now for Columbus Road, for Carter Road are in a zoning classification that makes those plans more palatable. So we believe that, you know, this is more immediate, but it will be something that we continue to work on in 2022 with respect to achieving this goal of trying to get access along the entirety of the riverfront. And finally, I will say there are a number of projects that are coming online where you may have the opportunity to implement element, elements of this along the river to make it more speedy. But again, this is the first time in the history since I've been working in the planning department that this has even been considered. So for us, you know, it is a priority and just want to ensure you and the rest of the commission that that work is going on. And the Chicago Model Design Guidelines and ordinance is one of the things that we are looking at with partners because we wanna do this the correct way.
Okay, I appreciate that. I will ask again in short order, and the reason is that the time to ensure that you don't have development that then blocks riverfront access for 50 years is when you're also encouraging more development. So you are relaxing zoning and making it easier and more understandable for developers to now develop this. So there will be a lot more development. And so the, the, the fear I have is that there will be a lot of development, which is good, but we are not protecting the continuous riverfront. So speed is of the essence, and I know that you are working on it, but this is not that complicated. This is a, really just a setback along the river, and every other city in America has it. So I believe that we should be able to do it quickly, in my opinion, and, and I feel like it's very urgent. So that's my comment. Are there any other comments from any other commission members?
Matt, you had your hand raised. Was that just from earlier?
Yeah, I wanna assure the commission that we're working already on riverfront access along the Carter Road Peninsula. We have the towpath trail connection on the Scranton roadside. You can see here that there is a parcel of land that has been split off as a part of the Thunderbird project. So that is active, an active project right now through the Capitol Projects. Part of that is, is an active project through the Capitol Projects Office. So it's something we are working on, and I fully agree that we need the proper rules in place to make sure that that is preserved into the future.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments, and then we will take a vote. Go ahead. Michael.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you, Lillian. Next is a conditional use permit in a two-family district. It's for permanent parcel number 114-24-053-052 and-051. This is at the address of 963 East 185th Street. This is per section 343.23 E and 2. Off-street parking or unloading areas, driveway across public sidewalks and building with an interior side yard more than four feet in width. Shannon, are you here for this one?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Shannon Leonard, City Planning. This is to establish, you saw this same property about two years ago to establish the use as a church, and the conditional uses were not granted, obviously, because at that time, this community, as well as the councilman and the CDC really did not support a church at this location. This location is back now. There's a new property owner that would like to open up a retail aquatic pet store with her son. And so this property here is located, as you can see, at the end of Marcello Road on East 185th. Next slide, please. It's in a pedestrian retail overlay. These are just some pictures of the exterior, just to give you some context of the location. Next slide, please. So the first, or two conditional uses that they need is the off-street parking within the first 40 feet of the pedestrian retail overlay, as well over the driveway or across the public sidewalk. As you can see here, they did remove the parking so that they would have nine parking spaces. They only need about four in addition to the fact that they have the driveway of the public sidewalk. Currently, you can see the existing conditions. This part of East 185th Street is part of the citywide, or the streets, streetscape project for 2022. And so they are working with Laura Balla and the CDC, I believe, to make some improvements to this area of their sidewalk. But they would like to ask that they could wait until after the city comes through and knocks down their sidewalks, as well as that area of their driveway, to make their driveway more in line with what is required by the zoning code. Next slide, please. And again, basically, you just have to decide if the size, shape, or layout of the subject property does not permit the placement of parking or driveway in a more suitable location, or it has been demonstrated by the applicant that the placement of the parking is allowed, location would jeopardize the continued occupancy of this property. This property has been vacant for quite some time. The former owner was unable to find a proper tenant. So I believe the applicant can make that argument that they, obviously, they're a landlocked property, so this is the only place the parking could go. Next slide. And again, the building with an interior side yard of more than four feet. The property to the north is a utility station that is owned by the City of Cleveland, and to the south is a used car lot. And so their parking here is the four foot, it's about a 30-foot side yard. Next slide, please. And so they just need the conditional uses for the off-street parking, the driveways to sit in across the public sidewalk, and a building with an interior side yard of more than four feet. And this is really more in terms of, from our perspective, is more for technicality purposes. The councilmen and the CDC, as well as the community, support this project. This is their first retail location. The applicant is here to speak, as well as, I believe, the consultant for the area, which is Ms. Laura Balla.
So thank you very much. The applicant, would you like to speak now?
Yes, I'm here if you have any questions. I don't know if I have anything else to add to what Shannon has presented.
Thank you. How about the representative of the CDC? Would you like to add anything?
Laura Balla here. No, I think Shannon covered it quite nicely. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Commission members, questions?
Of approval.
I'm sorry, unmute. That's enough, sir.
Go ahead, August.
The only question I have is just what, what's, what's planning's position on this. If I missed it, I apologize.
City planning supports this. I mean, this is a retail use here. This is what we're looking for in a pedestrian retail overlay district. This building has long been vacant, and so city planning does support the use of this location and the improvements to the parking lot that'll be made via the streetscape project next year.
Thank you, Shannon.
So August, would you like to make a second?
There was a second.
Oh, I didn't hear. Who made the second? Thank you, Councilman. Michael call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Good luck. Thank you very much. New townhouse development in a two-family district. This is for permanent parcel number 128-04-038. This is at 11413 and 11415 Brick Oval. Shannon, go ahead, please.
Shannon Leonard, City Planning. So you all approved this project a couple weeks ago. It's the former St. Luke's area. They, the applicant here needs these two model homes. They need their permits to get the funding going. This part, particular parcel, as you can see, is outlined in yellow. It is split-zoned, multi-family, open space, recreation, and two-family. So out of technicality, when you have a split-zone parcel, the Building and Housing Department views this as the most restrictive. So in this case, open space and two-family. And so when that happens, under the townhouse code, city planning commission is given the determination to determine if this is a proper development and a more restrictive zoning than it is generally permitted by right. And so the applicant initially was going through a subdivision plat process back when they first brought the project to you all to divide along where the zoning was. And so unfortunately, that didn't happen the way that they would like it to happen, and because they're under funding constraints, we suggested that they come to planning to, you know, obviously, this project has already been endorsed, to really just take care of this technicality. we suggested that they come to planning to, you know, obviously, this project has already been endorsed to really just take care of this technicality of building a townhouse project in this code, in this districts. Next slide, please. And so there was rezonings. Originally, this area on the left, as you can see on the bottom left, was a planned unit development. But because of whatever funding or whatever happened, that did not go through. So then in July two thousand and eighteen, we had rezoned the whole area to multifamily G-two to follow at that time what the parcel lines were. And so at this point, the lots were consolidated at some point, creating this split-zone issue. Next slide, please. And so as, as, like I said, under two-family, you all have to determine whether, based on the application, if the townhouse use shall be permitted. And these are just some context photos. Next slide, please. And so basically, is the development visually compatible with nearby properties and scale, height setbacks, design, et cetera? And is the development site layout arranged so as to create visual interest, promote safe, efficient, and comfortable pedestrian and vehicle access, et cetera? And so again, this is just giving you all a reminder, the projects that was already approved through you all through the design review process and to determine if this is an acceptable use on this parcel. It should be noted that they will go through a subdivision plat process that they are going through simultaneously with coming here as well as going to Board of Zoning Appeals for the variances that they will need. Next slide, please. Oh, okay. So again, so that's it. So you're just making the determination if this is a proper use, giving them a conditional use based on what they presented previously, and that was approved previously to use this lot as a townhouse development project.
Thank you. Commission members?
Move approval.
I second.
We have a motion in two seconds. Further discussion?
I'm in support of this. I just have a quick question. It's related. I'm in support. Did they resolve the name issue of this development?
Talking about Woodland Heights Renovation?
I just wondered if they had resolved or found a name or decided on the name or anything, just not related to this zoning.
The name is now Elevation.
Elevation, yes. We changed the name. Uh huh. We worked with the community and Burton Belkarr to discuss that and our new name is Elevation and and we're very excited for this project. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Thalia. Any other comments or questions? Michael calls the roll, please.
Mr. Chair, I must abstain. I'm a new village corpse. And I found out recently we're a partner in this effort.
Thank you, August. Appreciate that. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mandatory referrals. Mandatory referrals. This is ordinance number one-zero-five-nine dash twenty-twenty-one, authorizing the Director of Public Works and Community Development to enter into a property exchange agreement with the Board of Education of Cleveland Metropolitan School District for the transfer of various properties. Jamie, are you speaking to this?
I am, yes. Jamie, you're as a Commissioner of Real Estate here for the City of Cleveland. So if, for those of you who have been on City Planning back in two thousand and nineteen, you're gonna find some of these sites familiar. We had one ordinance that included the sites that were gonna come over to the city. We needed to repeal that two thousand and nineteen ordinance and repackage them as two separate ordinances. The first one came earlier in the year related to the Buckeye Woodlands School. And then this one picks up the other two parcels coming to the city as a new swap between the city and the school district. And just a reminder, the Ohio Revised Code allows the district and a municipality to have a land swap if there's a mutual benefit between the two parties. So we've determined that the swap that you see here today has a mutual benefit to both parties. Coming to the city in Ward Seven is a portion of the Daniel Morgan School Site for a low-income housing tax credit project. And I'll have slides showing you the the sites here in a second. And also coming to the city, I'll just go through them all first. So if you go back a slide, Maurice or Michael. Yeah, thanks. Also coming to the city is the former Forest Hills Parkway School Site for a park expansion project. Going to the school district, are parcels needed for their new school constructions that are approved and on the horizon? In Ward Fourteen, one landbank parcel needed for the new Lincoln West High School. And in Ward Fifteen, three landbank parcels that are needed for the new Clark Elementary School. Next slide, please. So this, this slide here shows you, there's a little piece of the Daniel Morgan Site that's, that's just grass that's needed for the Kenmore Commons, a low-income housing tax credit site. And so this ordinance also allows us to then transfer this land over to the owners of the Kenmore Commons Site. Next slide. This here is the former Forest Hill Parkway School Site. It's grassed over. But if you go to the next slide, you'll see that the city has a master plan for a larger park project here, which includes, right in the middle where that oval is, is, is pretty much the center of the park, and that's where this Forest Hill Parkway Site is. Next slide. So this is the current Lincoln West High School, and they're gonna be rebuilding on the same site. And you can see there's one landbank parcel just to the north that would transfer from the city to CMSD. Next slide. And this is the current Clark Elementary School Site, which will be rebuilt at the same location. And there's three landbank parcels here that would transfer to CMSD so that they can reconfigure the site as needed for the new construction. They haven't gotten into any design yet for the new schools, but this ordinance will tee them up for the the site control that they need. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commission members?
Move approval. Downing.
Second, Fluker.
We have a motion in second. Further discussion? Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Have a great weekend.
You too.
Ordinance number one-zero-seven-seven dash twenty-twenty-one, designating the Slovenian workman's home as a Cleveland landmark. Who's here for this one?
Mr. Chair, Carl Brundt, Landmark Staff.
Hey, Carl. Go ahead.
Thank you. This was nominated as, on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, and a public hearing was held on October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Next slide, please. Slovenia is located in Southern Europe, along the Adriatic Coast to the east of Italy. It's once part of the Austria-Hungarian Empire. Slovenians began to settle in Cleveland in the eighteen-eighties with immigration to Cleveland heaviest in the era before World War One. See, in the nineteen-ten census, there's fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-two national, nationally-born Slovenians in America. In nineteen-seventy census, greater, a large amount of those who were either born or mixed parentage in Cleveland. Next slide. Cleveland was experiencing unprecedented industrial growth that was attracted to immigrant groups from Eastern and Southern Europe, Europe, seeking employment. In Cleveland, Slovenians settled in the Saint Clair and East Sixty-Fifth Street neighborhood. They also settled in Collinwood, Newburgh, Euclid, West Park, Maple Heights, and Garfield Heights. The Collinwood neighborhood was one of the larger settlements, and there are several Slovenian institutions in the neighborhood, including Slovenian Workman's Home, Slovenian Home on Holmes Avenue, the Slovenian Home for the Agent on Neff Road and Saint Mary of the Assumption Roman Catholic Church on Holmes Avenue. Next slide, please. By the end of the eighteen-nineties, they were realizing those who had immigrated here were not gonna be able to go back home. So they started assimilating here and they formed their national parishes and their other clubs and businesses, with the first Slovenian-language newspaper being here, including eighteen-ninety-nine. There's also this increase in US citizenship, realizing that they were gonna be seeing in a large surge during World War One, because they were going back. There had been a lot of troubles in the homeland for various groups over there. They would hold the cultural events at the local halls that were eventually deemed too small. Next slide, please. So for the Slovenian Workman's Home, we have a really good timeline of when all of this was happening, from their fiftieth anniversary. So it was nice to have all this stuff laid out for us. So there were actually two locations that they were considering, and there are two groups that wanted to decide where to put their, their home. Next slide, please. Eventually, the two groups split, and eventually both Slovenian homes were built, one on Holmes Avenue and one here on Waterloo. And in nineteen-twenty, the local ones, lodges, formed this and began to raise money for construction. Next slide, please. So the architect for the buildings, Alexander Seawolf, who was a member of the City Planning Commission for a few years back in the days when it was still known as the City Plan Commission. And we have good time, timeline here with the groundbreaking, laying of the cornerstone, and green opening on January first, nineteen-twenty-seven. Next slide, please. There was an addition of a public bar room, then bowling alleys. There is installation of the monument for the deceased war veterans, and then they purchased that property next door to expand the parking lot in the nineteen-seventies. Next slide, please. The Slovenian Workman's Home was located on the northeast corner of Waterloo and Shiloh Road, in North Collinwood neighborhood, about eight miles northeast of downtown Cleveland. Two-story building fronts ninety feet along Waterloo Road and a hundred and twenty feet deep along Shiloh Road. Steel-framed building has a red brick and limestone facade. The actual designation is for the parcels that are in pink, numbers one through six. Slovenian homes were important centers of social and cultural life. They, they hosted concerts, plays, dances, singing societies, and banquets. Cleveland-style polka was important in Slovenian homes throughout Cleveland. Frank Yankovic, the Polka King, came out of this tradition. Next slide, please. This is also used for other recreation uses as well, not just the Slovenian culture, but boxing was a regular feature here. Eventually, the bowling would come later, and then they had bocce downstairs. And then in the nineteen-sixties, it briefly turned into a archery range. And there were also a number of businesses, because there were a couple of storefronts in here as well. Next slide, please. So when we were doing research for this, we came across this BZA photo when they were attaching the bowling alley to it and noticed that the bar on the left only had one story to it. And we didn't know why, because we know that the building's a two-story building. So we tried to put the pieces together a little bit more. Next slide, please. And when we found that, we found that there was an addition of the second story in nineteen forty-seven by the architects who would later design the Croatian Liberty Home down the street on Waterloo, which is now the Beechland Ballroom. And then we found the additional permits of when the rest of the changes happened. Next slide, please. These photos are from nineteen eighty-nine, and this was originally nominated back then. There was some reason why the nomination was held and kind of just fell through the cracks until now. So we started from scratch on this. Unable to locate historic photos of the original building. However, next slide, please. We're able to locate the original blueprints through the city archivist, and it shows the different, the two bays on the one side and the one on the east. Next slide. West elevation. Your next slide. Just facing the parking lot. Next slide, please. Next slide. This is the bowling alley addition. Next slide. The monument, we see here, it has fourteen gold star members carved into it. And then there were plaques with the five hundred and forty-eight service members listed along the base. Next. Unfortunately, at some point, this was damaged. And I don't know when, and the plaques were removed. They are supposedly supposed to be inside the building somewhere, though they have not been located yet. There are, there are active efforts to try and locate them. Next slide, please. This is the monument as it currently stands. Originally, we wanted to include this in the nomination, but after discussions with the owner, we have left this out of the nomination. There are efforts currently looking for a more suitable, appropriate place for this to be with different veterans groups and the CDC. Next slide, please. So your current conditions, front side. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide, please. So the Slovenian Workman's Home is significant because of its ties to the Cleveland Slovenian community and Eastern and Southern European immigrant groups that were so important to the settlement of the city. And then the final slide should be our sources for all the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the councilman on the line or the CDC? Commission members?
I move approval. Downing.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Further discussion? Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry. Lilian, are you there?
I am sorry, yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Carl, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, ordinance number one-one-two-three dash twenty-twenty-one is amended. We did receive the markups in advance, so hopefully everyone get a chance to take a look at it. This is for directing a portion of the Cleveland's Coronavirus Local of Fiscal Recovery Funds payments to the city's COVID-nineteen response by authorizing the Director of Community Development to enter into an agreement with eligible private nonprofit organizations to finance the development of affordable housing at nine-four-one-zero Huff Avenue. Who's here for this one?
Mkeel Whackers, Department of Community Development.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, so this is a request. It's actually a amended request. The city is looking to get authorized me to enter into a contract and expend funding from ARPA to develop affordable housing for a project called ninety-four-ten Huff, on Huff Avenue in in the Huff neighborhood near Sir, University Circle. The request for funding is in an amount of eight million to redevelop a blighted structure that has been vacant for a number of years now. This request is also to authorize the transfer of three city-owned lots that are adjacent to the property. And if I can share my screen, I can pull, show you what those lots are. They're, they're fairly small and will help allow the facility to create a community center for the, then redevelop the apartment building. Oh, and I don't, I, that's something I can get share permission.
Maurice, can you do that?
One moment.
I'm looking forward to getting together in person. And you could just hold it up.
Maurice, are you there? Can you share? Allow him to share his screen.
Yes, um Director Whacker should have the ability to share a screen.
Go ahead, Dirk.
All right, yeah, the share button's still um not highlighted. So. Uh, I can just describe them. There's three parcels. Um. Uh, permanent parcel number uh one nineteen dash thirteen dash zero thirteen, one nineteen dash thirteen dash zero eleven and one ninety-one. Um, or one nineteen thirteen dash zero ninety-eight. Um, these are all adjacent to the pro- project. The project itself is um to take an existing. Uh, condemned building uh and redevelop it into a hundred and sixteen affordable housing units. Uh, fifty-five one-bedroom units and sixty-one two-bedroom units. Uh, the the project will have uh onsite parking, laundry facilities, business center, fitness center, landscape, green spaces. Uh, and also the developer is going to be providing services, uh employment assistance. Ah, there, I can share now. Um, entrepreneurship assistance, healthcare, arts and culture opportunities, financial literacy and and children's programming. Which is largely the reason why they need the additional land bank lots in order to create that community center. Adam.
Well, commission members, have you heard enough? Do you understand the properties?
I'll still make a motion to approve Downing.
I have a question. Who's the, who's the, who's the nonprofit?
Well, there's a developer. Uh, they've created a, an LLC called ninety-four ten Huff. Uh, the developer is out of uh Texas. Uh, they've uh HUD reached out to them specifically to take a look at this property since it's a blighted. Um, uh, structure not in their inventory, but in their purview of concern, since it was a for, in a previously affordable housing development. Um, and they are looking to establish a a nonprofit in order to be able to use the ARPA funds for the redevelopment.
Yeah, I just, I, this ordinance was introduced on Monday at council. It's up for passage this coming Monday, I presume. I just, I feel like we're. Putting the cart before the horse with a lot of big dollar projects right now. That's, that's just some commentary. I mean, it's just.
Developer has site control through the LLC, so they purchased the property. Uh, they're aware of the the requirements in order to use ARPA funds and are are fully committed to that. And uh they are on notice to be able to be uh present at council the whole on Monday to provide the council uh the. Uh, the answers to questions that they may have.
I'd like for them to have been present at this meeting to let me know what I'm voting on.
I was under, I, I, you guys have a big agenda, so I didn't want to uh have you guys uh slow down your agenda. Um, I know this was mandatory referral, just a question of uh whether um this conforms to the city plan. Uh, I believe it does, and therefore requesting that mandatory uh consideration.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second McCray Scott.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Further discussion.
May I make a comment, please?
Who, who, oh, Cam. Hey, Cam.
Kim Scott, City Planning. Um, so with the parcel ending in zero. I think it's one, one. Uh, it actually is located on the west side of an existing. Um, business. And I would ask that that parcel be removed from the amendment request.
I have no objection to that.
Okay, so um Diane, you were the one that made the motion. Do you want to amend your motion to exempt the one parcel?
Yes. I will amend my motion to exempt that parcel.
Um, I have a question. I just kind of to Charles's kind of uh point. Um, could, could you clarify again, just one more time, sort of like, what's the amount and is it a loan or a grant? Just that.
So the authorization is is uh an eight million dollar uh gap funding. Uh, in a thirty-four million dollar project. Uh, the developer is uh working with uh OFA down in Columbus to secure four percent uh tax credits. Uh, and they have letters of commitments from HUD from other sources um uh for for construction. The, the pros, the project will need to go through underwriting. Uh, as with any project, we uh determine what the project can support. Uh, if they can support an eight million dollar loan, we will structure as a loan. If it needs to be a balloon payment. Uh, in the future, we'll structure as a balloon payment. If it needs to be some sort of forgiven loan or a grant, we'll structure it based on the needs to get the project done.
So it's, we are, you, it's possible it could be an eight million dollar grant.
Yeah, right, with it, with affordable housing, there's always a gap and uh where you look to underwrite it to make sure it's financially viable over the long term.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, Lillian?
Kind of.
Okay, um, so the second, um, do you accept the the change by the uh Diane?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, Michael call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
No.
Okay, the motion carries. Um, take a look at the administrative approvals. Uh, if you could move through these. Maurice.
Um, after seeing these, um, I believe I need to recuse myself from the one or abstain from the one prior that had to do with the energy improvement district. Um, just because I believe we're involved in that one. So I'm abstaining from that ordinance. I didn't catch the number, but it's the one that. Refers to an energy improvement district. I'll abstain from that one.
Approve of this made of administrative of administrative approvals on the docket.
Nice second Downing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Michael call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing. Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Uh, yes, within a wanted abstention.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Yes. We move on. I'd like to address the, the concern about the, the previous um um. Project or at least the allocation of funds for that project. I would like to recommend that planning, community development, economic development, whoever's involved in. Um, the allocation of opera funding to to come up with a, a strategy whereby. We understand what the impact is and we understand what the challenges are obviously, but we, we need to understand how, why and how. And I think it should be more strategic because it's going to continue to come up. There's going to be large sums of money for the next. Four or five years. So I just think there should be a, a, a strategy to address Charles's concerns, Lillian's concerns and and the commission's concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, August. Well stated. Uh, so next we have a special presentation. This is off-road trails and wayfinding uh signage system. And this is seeking final approval. Um, before we get going on this one, we all received the plan in advance. And I know we've looked through it, so I asked the applicant, when you go through this, go through it quickly because we have a lot of things on our agenda. And we've seen the full plan, even though the deck that we're going to see right now is an abbreviated one. So um who's here for this?
Alex Hart Oats from Destination Cleveland.
All right, uh, Alex, did you say?
Alex, that's right.
Okay, great, Alex. Uh, go ahead, please.
Very good, and then thanks for your time. We'll move through this quickly. Um, so go ahead, next slide please. Um, Destination Cleveland back in about twenty seventeen uh saw a- all of the planning coming together for off-road trails. And um took the view that these things ought to all work together and be of one um. Of one family with signage and with wayfinding. And so we set aside some money uh to build a plan for unified signage and wayfinding for all of our off-road trails. We brought together this task force, um, all the members of which you see here. Um, basically, all, all of the players in bike infrastructure across the city. When the shortway rehabilitation was finished in twenty eighteen, we installed a pilot project based on the findings of that task force. And in twenty nineteen, we ran a survey uh and adjusted our recommendations based on that. So the signs exist on Lakefront West Bike Way. The Metro Parks has begun to install this signage system on all of their uh tiger-funded trails. And now we're bringing the final plan to you. Uh, it contains graphic standards. All of the text is ADA compliant. Uh, all of the icons which are on the next slide uh align with the National Park Service recommendations. Graphic standards uh that have been accepted by various uh players that develop these trails and a standardized color system. So all of these signs will have the the gray, the black and the white, and then their, their use, not their user, their creator, their maintainer. Um, gets their branded colorway. So this is all laid out exactly how it needs to be done to keep a standardized system going as these different trails come online. And are developed into the future. Same thing for the map sign type. You know, all, all the standards and colors are laid out. These are the four types of signs that go on these off-road trails, the orientation kiosk, the directional, which is most of them. The maps and then finger pointer signs at at major intersections of trails. The Metro Parks also asked as part of this that we develop a sign type for bike boulevards for really short on-road connections in between trails. These are not for the major bike lanes or things like the midway in the future, but for those little jumps on road. We get down to the construction details so that as these go from project to project and community to community, they stay consistent. All the shop drawings are in here. Your graphic designer, your sign shop can take these and produce a standardized product. Go ahead, next slide please. Shop drawings for the on-road stuff. And then finally, and probably most importantly from a technical aspect, this will come with templates, micro or Adobe Illustrator templates where a, a new user can just plug in their information. It really becomes a plug-and-play system. So Destination Cleveland has made the investment in this plan. We've brought all the other partners in on its development and uh and we think it's ready to go. So our request is that you would adopt this plan as Cleveland standard for wayfinding signage for off-road trails as they're constructed. Or as they're renovated, things that already exist like Harrison Dillard, Lakewood, but lake front and bike way east. Um, as those come up for, for renovation that this uh sign package would be applied to things like that too. So we expect to um take this out to other municipalities, to the county and Cuyahoga Greenways. We'd like everyone to adopt this as the standard throughout the region. Um, but we're coming to Cleveland first. Because so many of these trails have come online in the past year with a few more to go. So if there's any questions, uh, I'd be happy to take them.
Yeah, I, uh, Mr. Chair to the applicant, um, there is a sign with a green background and white lettering. Um, I, I think it might be a little hard to read. Um, just from my viewing it on my screen. Again, I am on a computer. Our, I, I might want to suggest that maybe it gets mocked up to see if it. It's re- it reads better. Maybe it's just me. I just have some concerns there.
Yeah, so I know that we've checked all those contrast values against the, against ADA compliance. It's probably a little bit easier to read in person than it is on the screen. Um, but it is worth looking into.
Great comments.
Uh, I move.
Second. And and just as a commentary, it'd be great at some point to get kind of a broader presentation on the Cleveland Trail System. I think. A lot of us might know what's built, but kind of one, what's planned and two, how there, there's a pretty. High density of trails in some parts of town, and then there's other parts of town where there's really opportunities for expansion and growth. Um, so uh and and one of my things I was just about to say is understanding how this links in with kind of the broader metro parks. Paths which uh are realistic for the region. And I see Sarah from Metro Parks put in the chat that she'd like to comment. So before we vote, we could. Uh, let her comment as well. I'd appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
And and we'll do that. Um, so we have a motion and a second and further discussion, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, commission members. Um, I just wanted to echo what Alex said. We are extremely supportive of this effort, Cleveland Metro Parks is. We participated. There actually had been a lot of work right before the pandemic hit with this signage program with the pilot on the Cleveland Lakefront Bike Way. And um, we, Cleveland Metro Parks picked up the ball and continued with the design guidelines and developed the. The on-road standards in coordination with the City of Cleveland through a separate contract with Guide Studio because we felt so strongly that this was important. As we were having our Tiger Trails and Topat Trails and other projects, Brighton Park coming online. So. We are in full support and will be implementing this on our, our upcoming trails and really hope that it. Um, it, it spreads throughout the entire county and this was one of the major um. Major recommendations coming out of the Cuyahoga Greenways Plan so that we have a system that is readable and understandable across the entire network. So. Thank you very much to Alex, Destination Cleveland, Guide Studio and City of Cleveland, especially Kelly Marshman, um. Cleveland staff for, for pushing this forward.
Thanks, Sarah. Um, you know, the, the one thing while you're still on the uh phone, Sarah. Um, one thing I would ask is, under definitions, and you know, technology changes all the time, so we have to always rethink these things. Um, they talk about off-road uh trails and bike ways. And under their, uh, you're allowed to use uh human power and electric power for both uh bicycles and scooters. Um, bicycles now can go over forty-five miles an hour on the electric bikes. We may think about. How that impacts these bike ways if people decide to start using them with those kind of bicycles.
I would just say that we would defer to the state um code regarding that and then also any of the city codes. Our Cleveland Metro Parks code only allows for. Um, class one and two bicycles, e-bikes, and so that does limit the, the speed.
Okay.
Um, and I think that is the prevailing kind of across the state and municipalities, that recognition that there is a distinction.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, we had Bud, Director Collier had his hand raised. Director Collier, did you want to make a comment?
Go ahead, Freddie.
Or was that from before?
Director?
Okay. It might have been from a previous case. I didn't notice it.
Okay, Michael call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Very well done. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh, the next presentation, we also received the um full plan, which is very large. Um, so hopefully everyone had the chance to go through it. Cut me up last night, so. Cut me up last night, so hopefully it kept you up, too. So this is the 2030 Housing Equity Plan. If we can briefly go through this one, too, since we have the full plan in our possession.
Yes, thank you.
Speak to this one.
Yeah, this is McKeel Whackers, Director of Community Development. And I also have Vincent Renia of Penn Praxis on the line today, who is our consultant and helped facilitate and develop this plan. So this is a 10-year housing plan. So we're calling the Cleveland 2030 Housing Equity Plan. It's been a over-a-year-long process by which to sort of put together strategies and framework by which to guide Cleveland in how it invests in housing throughout the city of Cleveland so that it can essentially meet what is laid out in the vision. So making sure that housing is safe first and foremost, that it's healthy and affordable, making sure that we are tackling the racial and geographic divides that exist in the housing market in Cleveland, and making sure that we can use housing to promote growth and lift up communities. The lack of investment in housing in some neighborhoods and many neighborhoods of Cleveland has really held those neighborhoods back. It is good to see that city is getting housing downtown and in some of the surrounding neighborhoods. But we also need to make sure that we're investing throughout the city of Cleveland. This plan was a lengthy process that involved a significant amount of stakeholders and input from the public. I think one of the best highlights I would need to share is that we had a survey of around 1,500 participants, residents throughout the city of Cleveland. And that was actually a close reflection of the demographic and economic spectrum within Cleveland. It's the first time I ever had a study with a survey that wasn't predominantly white or affluent. The majority of the participants of the survey were actually of very low income. One of the reasons for that is that we were able to tie in this study also into the rental assistance program and make sure that they give us their needs and wants in housing as they were applying for rental assistance, when it really helped inform and create a robust recommendations as a result. Next slide. So with the plan that you have, there's the plan itself, which is the first 40 or 50 pages. But attached to that is all the research I think is really worth its weight in gold. And we have an existing conditions report for the city of Cleveland that really goes deep into all the aspects of housing and housing insecurity and housing affordability. We also have a market study that I think is very robust that really looks at where are the opportunities and where Cleveland should be heading in order to make a housing market that serves all its residents. And you also have all the other research that goes along with that. Next slide. So coming out of that, there are obviously a number of conclusions, and they're not so much surprising. But I think what they're really distilled and focused is where we need to focus our energies and how we want to create strategies to address those. So if we go to the next slide. So the research really, you know, said that we need to develop an equity framework. We want to make sure that we do not leave residents behind, and we want to make sure we don't leave neighborhoods behind. So we need to make decisions and programs that really address those inequities so that we can create equity in how we use public resources for the benefit of all Clevelanders. We also need to support our industry that surrounds housing, repairing housing, rehabbing housing, and constructing new housing. We have actually a shortage of minority developers and contractors. And we really need to start putting together tools and financing and pipelines where we can create an industry that serves to create minority developers and contractors. We also need to make sure that we're serving underserved neighborhoods adequately, that resources go to those underserved neighborhoods, and that we're protecting the most vulnerable throughout the city from displacement. Displacement can be a function of neglect, but it can also be a function of prosperity. If, as, you know, when we are revitalizing our neighborhoods, we want to make sure that those who have lived their lives in those neighborhoods have an opportunity to stay in those neighborhoods if they choose. At the same time, if someone's been living in a home in a neighborhood for the past 50 years but do not have the resources to take care of it, we need to make sure that we get strategies that allow them to stay in the neighborhood or even stay in their homes that they currently are in. And then finally, a big aspect of this study was to create a report card to make sure that we're measuring what we're doing and delivering. So the overview of the plan, there's a lot of strategies and recommendations, but they all fall into four pillars. And they are protect, preserve, produce, and position. Protect is really getting back into that displacement and making sure that people do not become housing and stable or become homeless. We'll also make sure we're preserving our housing stock. This is probably the biggest Achilles' heel for the city of Cleveland. The city housing stock is old. It needs to be reinvested in. And we also need to see the opportunity in that. We also will need to produce housing. City of Cleveland is not competitive in the housing spectrum because we don't provide enough of the types of products that people want to see throughout the city of Cleveland. They're offered in certain neighborhoods, but not in all neighborhoods. And finally, we need to be able to position our city to be able to deliver on these. That means having a city hall that can, has the technology and the processes and the programs to meet this needs, but also means having partners in capacity across the city housing industry in order to meet these challenges. And next slide. So from these four pillars, we have targets. And we have an overall target of 100,000 units. And it's of that 23,000 units to be created, new construction or substantial rehab through the next 10 years. The largest sort of target is 41,400 units for home repair and other types of interventions to make sure that we maintain quality housing throughout the city of Cleveland. This is really an effort to, you know, expand beyond our demolition of blight and making sure that we don't have other structures fall into blight. And then finally, 35,600 households to be protected, either through various legal mechanisms or representation in housing court or other type of assistance. When families fall into a crisis, they can get those resources in order to bring them out of that crisis. And then finally, we'll go to the next slide. The report card, as I said, is going to be a key aspect. The last few pages on the plan part have outlined a report card we looked into, and then resourcing the plan. At the end of the day, this is all about coordinating public and private efforts so that we can deliver on the unit counts. And that will require not, you know, resources that go well beyond what the city can provide. I won't go into all the recommendations. They're in the plan itself. There's over 40 of them. And they're all sort of strategized in terms of what can be done in the short, medium, and long term. And I think I'll ask Vincent to really chime in real quick. And then we can open it up to questions. I know you guys want to keep your agenda moving.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having me. I would just add one thing, which is that, you know, one, well, two things. To echo, you know, the engagement strategy in this, the document's very much meant to reflect what we've learned through research and engagement, right? Not BS of research, an external team tells the city of Cleveland what's best for them. And I think the plan very much reflects that. It also reflects the leadership within the city, you know, Director Collier, Director Whackers, right? Like a whole broad set of local leaders who are really engaged throughout the process and helping us kind of steer this forward. The second bit I just want to add is that what you have here is, as you said, a very, very big document, right, that can keep you up all night long if you want to read every piece. And with that, we really wanted it to be a resource, right? This is not a plan saying you have to do one, then two, then three. It was really an opportunity to really put a broad set of ideas, both big and small, on the table that can really help guide a lot of conversations going forward. And so I think when you view the plan, it should be viewed as kind of a living, breathing document where some things are clearly at the forefront right now. But as we all know, the world changes very quickly. And opportunities arise and other challenges arise or get amplified. And so there's a lot more that's in the appendix and throughout the document that could be things that come to the forefront in future years. So I hope you see this part as a plan, but more broadly as a kind of a guiding resource that can be utilized across multiple dimensions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we open for comments?
Yes, go ahead.
First of all, I applied to the city administration. There's a huge amount of work that went into this. And obviously, this cannot even reflect that. But I am ashamed that something of such great magnitude is relegated to a line item in this agenda. When we look at Vision for the Valley, look at Sheraton Williams, all these other plans had their place in a special meeting. And we can do better. I think this deserves it. This is huge. We're trying to undo decades of scarring and misrepresentation that we relegated to a line item in this agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, August. Anyone else?
I just have a comment, and maybe it could be for a later date, which is to hear from both of your perspective, sort of the nexus or the more specificity about some of the thinking around the tax abatement research and its effects or impacts or opportunities around equity or a little more variation across the city as it relates to housing. Because I think there is a link, but I think it's kind of one of those things really in the weeds, like devils in the details. So just kind of as this evolves is how these come together with that work that's going on. I know, and there's a huge committee working on that, too. But I think they're so related, and there's so much opportunity to think about, let's say, the next 10 or 15 years and how that tool is so important for this. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Willie. And I agree with both August and Lily. And we need to take a look at this because these are guidelines, and it's not like one, two, then three. And we need to see what affects our communities the best or areas of our communities. And maybe this is just the beginning of an ongoing conversation. There's other things for people aging in place, you know, their property taxes take over, and that's nationwide, where people are not able to stay in their homes and stuff. So I think this is the beginning of a conversation. And we need to probably have multiple presentations to August's comment. And then also how this works with and affects things like tax abatement and those type of things. So I think both comments were excellent. But I think this is something that we should probably, as August said, have separate meetings on and kind of start diving into it now that we have a framework.
And David, I will, I don't think there's been a motion yet, so I'll make that motion. But in doing so, I'll just add to that conversation that I think there needs to be some discussion, some scrutiny about what tools we have in our existing tool belt and kind of a, most like an autopsy of are these tools working as intended? Because CHN brought up a very important point at a council hearing the other day that if you're using, for example, block grant dollars to help fund the purchase of a home, you're limited to 95% of the value or the average value of the area homes with, like, that census tract. And I could be getting the details wrong on this. I'll admit it's not my area of expertise. But I bring up the point because I want to make sure that the systems we have in place aren't unintentionally reinforcing the very phenomenon that we're trying to break through and overcome. And that I have a concern sometimes that the programs we have in place are doing that. But I'll move to a food.
Great comment. Do you have a motion?
Second.
A motion is second. Further discussion. Michael, please call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Excellent plan, excellent presentation, and I look forward to the continuation of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
East Design Review, this is the project one, and it's at 2777 East 75th Street, lot of sevens. Who's here for this? Anyone?
Mr. Chair, I think that Kurt Ubdograph is here representing the project.
Okay, Kurt?
Yes.
Are you there?
I'm here.
Is there anyone else that's going to be speaking besides yourself?
It'll just be me.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand, I got to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
This project is, I think many of you may be aware of it. It's got quite a bit of press since Opportunity Corridor opened. And we started getting on the city's agendas. It seems to get everybody's attention. It's 156,000-square-foot refrigerated warehouse. So it'll be designed to store frozen or refrigerated products. It is, see, it's going to be on city-owned land. We could scroll to the next slide. Or I don't think I have control of that. Thank you.
I do see.
So this is the site location. Right is Opportunity Corridor. East of 55th is over to the left, and then University Circle to the upper right. It is directly south of the Orlando Baking Company, which is on the north side of Opportunity Corridor. The green in this slide shows the area of the project. The street to the left is East 75th, to the right is East 79th. To the bottom of the map, which is the south, is the RTA. This map shows the RTA Redline Station, upper part of the slide, and green lines. And the red line there would be pathway for anybody using the RTA to get to the project. So it's only a couple of blocks from either of those two RTA stations, which I think is very exciting. We can go to the next slide. These next two slides are just what is around this project is proximity. So this is to the north. This is Orlando Bakery. Next slide. This is Opportunity Corridor. It's actually a couple of months ago. But this is looking east from East 79th. The East 79th, also the east side of East 79th, kind of looking northeast towards the Opportunity Corridor, which is kind of at the left. This is on East 75th, looking northwest from Holton Avenue. And this is southwest from Holton. That's, I don't know what's in that building. Not all that attractive. But mostly, and this is looking south from the project on East 79th. This kind of gives you what's, an idea of what's around there. There's mostly vacant land. This is the site plan. So we have a freezer building. There's a little bump out at the upper left, which is northwest. That's the office area, about 4,000 square feet. Employee parking is to the left. That access is East 75th. And the truck, truck dock apron is also Austin profit, East 75th. That's a darker gray. And we have some trailer parking there. Next slide. What you're going to see is the elevations that we were, or I'm sorry, this is landscaping plan. And I will say that these drawings are a resubmission. So the East Design Review has not seen these yet. These were done based on our meeting with them a week ago, a week and a half ago, to comments. And this has a lot more extensive landscaping.
Sure, you may want to point out their comments and what you've changed to satisfy them.
Okay. Um, to the north, which is to, to the top of the page. So the, the building is, it's, it's a big building and, and, you know, it's about 40 feet high. It presents itself to the Opportunity Corridor, which is why we put this little bump out, which is a lower, you'll see in the, in the renderings. It's a lower scale addition to break up that large facade. It's a freezer building, so there really can't be any, any openings in it. Originally, uh, along the north between the, the building and the Opportunity Corridor, we had a row of deciduous trees. And, uh, one of the general landscaping comments from Design Review was they wanted something a little more intensive and a little more naturalistic instead of just a half dozen trees in a straight row. So you can see from this, we've added quite a few trees and we, uh, put a little more, uh, I guess, natural presentation to those instead of trees being a straight line. They wanted a little more landscaping between the parking, the car park and opportunity corridor. Seeing our opportunity, which was other, so now there are some, um, crabapple trees and crops. We've also added some shrubs in front of the office building, being the office building in Opportunity Corridor. The sidewalk, you can see angled from the north, uh, of the building over to Opportunity Corridor. This connects with the existing, uh, trail that, that has been along there. And this will allow people to come from the RTA stations to walk directly to the building. We didn't have that addressed previously. Over to the left, uh, where the, the project fronts, East 75th, which is the west side. Again, there were, they wanted more landscaping and landscape rows of arbividae there. So we put a little more naturalistic landscaping there in additional plant materials. Those were main comments. There's also a decorative fence separating the parking from, uh, Opportunity Corridor. So that's a, that's a pretty standard requirement for the city. Uh, next slide. This is, these are the four elevations of the building. So the one at the top faces Opportunity Corridor. Again, this has been revised based on comments, mainly the comment was to have a little more interest on, uh, it was a blank facade facing Opportunity Corridor, the, uh, main warehouse, which you kind of see behind the little bump out to the right. Uh, so we had a stripe there, horizontal stripe. That was one suggestion that was made. We added that, which you can see, uh, we, we added the more landscaping and there was just six trees there originally. Now we've added the additional landscaping that, that you saw on the plan before. Uh, the second, um, uh, faces the RTA, the third facade faces the west or the east, excuse me. And that'll be actually, there's going to be retail zoning over there. So this will be behind the retail area that fronts on E 79th. And the last elevation, E 75th, showing the, uh, loading dock area. I'm just checking my notes. Oh, okay. Then this is, is an elevation, this is, of, uh, this would be from the northwest corner, uh, or opportunity in E 75th, looking southwest. You can see the bump out a little more clearly there, uh, the office area. This shows the, uh, the all purpose trail that's through there. So it's, it's a combination there, so it's a bike trail. Also has the more intensive landscaping than what we showed the, uh, parking view board previously again to address their, uh, their comments. Next. Uh, the, this is the color palette, so there will be some stone on this. We were attempting to pull some of the design elements and colors from Orlando's existing building north of the property. So that's what you're seeing, similar break, uh, brick, similar stone and some whites. Uh, and then the, uh, the PT1 is the color of the stripe that we added in response to the ARB comments. Next. This is just something to be submitted as part of the package. It's the lighting plan. I don't, we won't, we don't need to spend too much time on that. Uh, next item.
That's the last slide.
Oh, okay.
Last slide, okay. Uh, commission members, this is for schematic design approval.
I move approval, Downing.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, further discussion? Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Five state.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Motion carries. Kurt, uh, thank you very much for your presentation and this type of product is very needed in Cleveland. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Near West Design Review, uh, this is, uh, Pelton Flats, new construction, 2258 Literary Road. This is for, uh, final approval. Who's here for this one?
This is James Acemis with, uh, uh, ownership of the, uh, development. I'll be pretending on behalf of our team, uh, Nia Marinucci is not able to make it today.
Go ahead, James. Thank you. Oh, I gotta swear you in first. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead, James.
So this is a, uh, a three unit infill condominium building, uh, on Literary Road, uh, near the corner of West 10th. We're currently, uh, uh, developing six apartments and a retail storefront and a renovation of a old building, uh, that is already existing on another, uh, adjacent parcel. There's some extra land on there that we're looking to do this, uh, uh, three unit building in. The first floor would, uh, would have a, uh, lobby area for the condominiums and, uh, small office suite. The second floor would be its own condominium, the third floor and fourth floor, uh, its own condominium. Uh, if we could, uh, go to the next slide. This shows, uh, uh, regional location within Tremont. We'll go next slide. This is the existing, uh, existing site. Part of this would be parcelling off the, uh, area on the lower left-hand corner of the parcel. You can see the existing structures, uh, there on the northern part of the parcel. Previously they were connected and we've since demolished that, um, connecting addition. But again, that was, uh, part of a project already approved. What we're coming for today is the three unit building. Uh, next slide. This is our proposed site plan. Uh, the surface parking spaces, uh, are to, uh, satisfy and go with the commercial building, uh, or the apartment building, I should say. This condominium building has its own parking, uh, in two garage spaces, uh, on the first floor, accessible from a shared drive. Uh, you can see the lobby for the condos and the office on this site plan as well. Uh, next slide. This is the existing condition. You can see the green building in the very middle is the, uh, structure that we're renovating. And, uh, the, um, area closer from that green building is the site that we're talking about. Next slide. This is the reverse angle, uh, looking down literary, uh, from the intersection. Next slide. Uh, this is the area in which we're proposing this, uh, this structure. Next slide. Separate part of the parcel on the building next door. Again, renovated structure on the right. Keep going through. So we have, uh, first floor, uh, ground level, uh, plan. You can see, uh, office with a typical office layout in it, uh, the lobby and the garage. Next slide. Um, the second floor condominium layout, uh, one bed, one and a half bath, uh, then circulating stair on the bottom, uh, of the page. This is the third floor, uh, very similar layout, uh, with the, uh, exception of a fourth floor, uh, additional room, bonus room that could be a home office. And next slide, please. And that unit will also have an outdoor, uh, area. We've got some elevations here as well. Uh, a lot of, uh, next slide, please. Uh, a lot of glazing on the first floor, both for the lobby and the office. Matching requirements in this area. You've got the, um, elevation facing the driveway, the garage door and windows. Uh, you can, uh, also see the door for the outdoor space for the second floor unit. Next slide, please. Backside elevation. And then the, uh, um, west facade of it as well. But these are colored, so, uh, plan is to use a, uh, black painted fiberglass cement board, uh, on the left portion, and then a green metallic panel with some, uh, kind of ridge to it, uh, as well with more of a vertical orientation. Keep going. This is the context of it compared to the, uh, renovated building, uh, to the right. Couple other, uh, site relationships within the, the whole site. Go to the next slide. This is the, um, materiality that we're, uh, we'd like to use here. A little bit of a, a modern style with some, uh, colors that are matching the historic, uh, the context of the neighboring buildings. Since we presented to Design Review, uh, a few of the changes that, uh, we had made based on their input, uh, was adding some additional glazing, uh, especially in the literary face. Putting in a single garage door for the parking to, uh, make sure it was as, uh, easy to access in and out of the parking garage as possible. We, uh, stepped back the stair tower as well, uh, for the second, third and fourth floor to, uh, really, um, emphasize the pedestrian first floor type experience. And that's also what's, uh, what's driving the overhang at that point as well. And, uh, um, I think we have some other pictures of, uh, that's the next presentation. So, uh, that is what we're, uh, presenting to you today.
Thank you. Mission members, this is for final approval.
I move approval, Downing.
I second, Curry.
We have a motion, a second, further discussion? Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Slide.
Yes.
Thank you, James, nicely done.
Yeah, great project, thank you.
Thanks.
Next is, uh, Abbey Avenue Apartments and Townhomes, new construction. This is for schematic design approval. This is at 1910 Abbey Avenue. We have received, uh, from the Duck Island neighborhood, uh, very well done, actually. A questionnaire they sent out to their members. And we also have all received, um, from the Tremont West Development Corporation, their letter with, um, one in, in, uh, in support of the project, but with some caveats and moving forward. So, um, who's here for this one? Brandon? Who's here? Maurice? Who do we have?
It looks like, well, it looks like, uh, Brandon Klein, but he's not saying anything.
He's there. He's, he's, it looks like he's.
He's right there.
Replexed.
Maybe having some technical issues.
Brandon? Are you there?
Looks like he's working on it.
Should we go back to him then? Well, I just said, no, so Brandon, are you there?
No, he dropped off now. You want to come back to this one?
Yeah, let's come back to this one. We're not going to table it because hopefully you can get back on the line. Uh, Downtown Flats Design Review, this is, uh, Silver Hills at Thunderbird. This is the West Bank of Carter Road. Who's here for this?
Looks like Brandon's back.
Yeah, uh, this is Gary O'Grackey, uh, for, uh, the, the Thunderbird case, if, if we're up.
I can barely hear you. Can you say it again?
Yeah, this is, this is Gary O'Grackey from, uh, Timmit for the Thunderbird case, if, if.
Hi, Gary.
Hi, hi, everybody.
All right, well, let's do this one. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
You, you also have Seth Mendelson on for the Thunderbird case as well, Silver Hills at Thunderbird. Seth Mendelson.
And, and I see you swore your, uh, swore into, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, you, you want to start Seth, then introduce your.
Absolutely. Thank you, Gary. Um, thank you, everyone. So we are a, a development company based out of the Cleveland area. We have a partnership on many projects throughout the country with a company out of Columbus, the Edwards Companies, where we joint venture on all the projects. They're all very similar to this project in that we promote urban walkability and we go into a lot of neighborhoods that are up and coming and help take the first step to help, um, create that urban, modern urbanism with the walkability. So we're excited for this project, especially in our hometown and, um, where it just fits exactly what we excel with. If you could go to the next slide, please. This just shows you some of the other projects. For instance, we're in Fort Myers on the water there, and we do target waterfront type properties that have walkability. And another aspect about what we do that's very important is we're long-term holders and a very good local neighbor. Uh, if you want to go to the next slide, please. So from here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand this over to the architecture team, which is also out of the Cleveland area, um, for actually almost all of our projects nationally. And, um, right before I do that, I'll, I'll explain our main goal here is that we're going to embrace all the rear front potential that Cleveland has, bring the connectivity to the Scranton Peninsula. So especially we're excited about the breweries that are going in, the, the parks that are going in. And so we're trying to provide something that the next generation is going to be very proud of. And then from there, we can go to the next side and, and Gary will take over.
Thank you, Seth. Go ahead, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is just a little context. You can kind of see the red, uh, highlighted area. That's the site on the Scranton Peninsula, uh, you know, and it, and the, the back of the site goes the Kaga River. You can see the cross hatch area. Again, this is kind of like, it's part of the Thunderbird area next to the new BrewDog. Uh, again, just more context. You know, there are, there are a couple, uh, challenges on the site. We're going to have to do some deep foundations. Uh, there's a retaining wall. If you look to the right of the page, to the, to the south, that we have to deal with as you go up Carter Road, which will kind of come into play a little bit when we get to the drawings. And, uh, you know, there is, there was some brownfield issues that, uh, I believe are remediated. Again, just more context, uh, everyone's probably familiar with, with the. Again, just more context. Everyone's probably familiar with, with the, you know, with the, with the site. There's not a lot around there, just some industrial buildings really. Next slide. So this is sort of the current site plan that we have. We did go to design review and this plan that you see up for the north building has been schematically approved. We've been in conversations with design review for the south side. So today we're asking for schematic approval and and, and, and plan or rather design review has not seen the south side, the, the low, the smaller rectangular building to the left. But we're, we're in conversation with them and we plan to go, and actually they said they did, they did not want to see the site. So basically they gave us schematic approval for this whole thing, and then we're going to have to go back for final for them. So next slide, please. So this is a little bit larger view of the site plan. You can see it's a, it's a five-story apartment building. Wood frame over, over podium is, is what we're envisioning at the moment. The, you can see there's a swimming pool courtyard, wraparound garage, liner units around the garage and we do between the north and south building, you can kind of see there's a, this would be a public pedestrian way to get to the river. And one thing to note, you can see the river edge, actually that white area along there is not really our property. So I think the long-term plan is for that to become a, a, a public riverwalk. But it's not part of this project. We don't own the property, but that's, that's what, you know, we're hoping for and that I think that's what's envisioned, but I don't know that there's any, you know, definitive plans for that at the moment. Because the bulkhead probably needs some work and you have to do some paving, et cetera. Here's kind of the, the layout of the, of the apartments. You can kind of see, you know, there's a, there's a courtyard with a pool, parking garage.
Gary, sorry to interrupt you, it's Lillian. Just what is the, the dimension of that from the property line to the bulkhead? You know? Approximately?
Yeah. Do you know, Matthew, are you on? Do you know? Is it about, I'm gonna say it's about thirty feet?
It varies from twenty-five and then it gets all the way up to about seventy, I think, at that one section where it really juts into our property.
Okay. Who, who technically owns it? Is it city, county, port? Who, who owns it?
As far as I'm aware, it's part of the overall Thunderbird. They have that parcel all along both the front of BrewDog, this site and the Great Lakes site to our south. That whole parcel is owned, I believe, by an entity called Boardwalk LLC.
Okay, but, so it's not publicly owned. It's privately owned. Is that correct? The, the, the riverfront access isn't a public entity, right?
I do not know that information.
We can find that out.
I mean, we need to know that.
It's privately owned and that they're doing this to build a boardwalk and
Right.
to, to the public. And that's what we've been told this entire time and our design had to accommodate for that.
That's what the question was, but it shouldn't be a point of advocacy. So I get your point, Lillian. That's obviously why the discussion that we had earlier was relevant. But by virtue of the exchange and having a dialogue and ensuring and encouraging development like this to have that opportunity to have that setback, you have to do that in the meantime.
Right. No, no, I understand that. I'm just worried long-term about privately held space like that. Who owns it long-term? Like the sort of thinking about that? Like, is it going to be sold? You know, like, anyway, it's not for you guys, but it's just squarely in what I super care about, which is eventually, you know, to have, it's just, I understand it. It, it just worries me that it's privately owned. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And so you can see, so here are some of the elevations. You can see, so this is, this is along Carter Road and there's a match line. So you have to envision these things put together. But, you know, through discussions with design review and, and Jack Pialoski, we've had meetings with him. He's been nice enough to, to comment and, and, you know, kind of communicate the committee's thoughts. And so this is the latest rendition of where we're at. You can kind of see we've simplified the facade based on what we had before, but there's, there's different materials. There's brick, stucco metal panel, hardy panel and flatboard siding. Next slide. Again, so this is, this is the long elevation of the north building on the riverfront. It's a similar palette of materials. Again, brick, same, same materials, just sort of composed to help break up the masses we work around the building. Next slide. Here you can kind of see how the, there was a closer view. Here's how they are overall. Next slide. Again, and this is the, the, the north elevation of the north building. Similar materials as, as discussed. Next slide. And this is the south elevation. This would be sort of as, as you, as you go through that pedestrian pass through to the river. Next slide. So this is the south building. So this is a, a three-story building, forty-two units, forty-five parking spaces. And you can see we have tuck under parking and there, there's, so this one is, is a little bit you know, trickier to understand in the sense that there's a pretty good slope of the grade, which you'll see on the elevations. And we also are dealing with the retaining wall to the east. Next slide. You can kind of see, so we have tuck under parking. Can't see my cursor, but you can kind of see, see it there. And then as, as the building slopes down, we, we're putting in units. And I guess the other thing to note about this, to the north or to the right of the page where you see that poche, this, this is the access to the property. There's an easement that goes through this property. So to the south, there's a vision to be, I think Great Lakes owns it or, or is working on doing a, some sort of a, a venue there with food trucks and some, maybe some sort of a beer venue, but they have access through the site. So next slide. Again, here's a typical floor plan of the south building. Next slide. So here you can kind of see what we're dealing with, with the grade. So on the east drive, the large gray boxes add grade. There's really, those aren't garage doors. That's envisioned to be like a hollow spot, if you will, that there's tuck under parking. And this is how we're providing between that and on the opposite side of the drive. That's how we're providing parking for this building. Next slide. There's also some guest spaces for that. So here's, here's the this is sort of the northeast elevation from Carter, kind of looking from BrewDog of the north building. Next slide. Here's the overall development. You know, looking to the, to the northeast, you can kind of see the, the four-story south building and the five-story north building. So this is the way it looks if you're, you know, coming out of boat from going out to the lake. Next slide. This kind of gives you a sense of what that pedestrian pass-through between the two buildings looks like, that, you know, the public would have access to and hopefully eventually to that boardwalk that we're hoping, you know, that will get turned into a public boardwalk. Next slide. It's just a pallet of materials, the brick, the synthetic stucco. The hardy board cement panel and the two, two metal panels, the dark and the light smaller chips are the metal panels. And so this is sort of the, the schematic landscaping plan that we're envisioning. You know, it's a prominent site, so we're, we, you know, are helping to use the landscaping almost in an architectural way to help modulate the building, but also you know, create a good pedestrian experience, you know, both on the river and on Carter Road. Next slide. Here's some of the species of plantings and trees that we're, we're proposing. Next slide, more, more landscaping, planting species. Next slide. Go to the next slide.
That's the last one.
Okay, thank you.
Mission members.
And right.
This is for schematic approval.
I have a hand raised.
Freddie.
Yeah, so thank you, our commission members. A couple of things. One, it's obvious with respect to the zoning proposal that was approved today. This is part of the why behind that. The other thing that I want to just highlight that would have been a preference with respect to this, the level of density that's here. If you will, go to the site plan, please, for me.
Sure, one sec. Let me go back further.
That shows the street and everything.
That one?
That's fine, yes. So one thing with respect to the whole vision for the Thunderbird initiative is really to create that sort of grid urban feeling down here, which I think this project contributes to that. One of the things that you have to be very sensitive about though, just like you have neighborhoods that flank the waterfront. You can be on streets like Lake Shore, for example, and not know you're by water. And when you're on Carter, you know, and you're traveling along Carter, it's important to have visual cues that's going to pull you through. Because the site is so dense and the, the frontage along Carter is, is, is pretty large. So the one pedestrian access point that you have between the two buildings is, is good. But it would have been great to have something more substantial with respect to people being able to see the water, you know, from Carter. Because as you look at the frontage here, I don't know what, how many linear feet of frontage that you have on Carter Road. Do you know how many, how much you have? I, I don't know the exact, you know, footage dimension. I don't know if Matthew does, but I mean, you know, to your point, it's, you know, it's hundreds of feet. Right. And, and that's substantial. So and, and what's the message that you want to make sure that you send, even with respect to honoring the descent back there? Sometimes developments of scale along water, if they're massive, can send a hands-off message to just the general public. So you have to be very intentional about that. So I just wanted to highlight that. And I don't know from a design perspective, what you can do to give some type of more, you know, visual cue. If you're along Carter Road, that the water's there or finding another way in which to pull the pedestrian, you know, off of Carter Road, because again, you're going to have development on the other side of Carter Road. It's going to feel like a a neighborhood street potentially. So I just think that is something that is worth considering. Right. And, and one, one thought maybe to, to your point, you know, the, the bridge to the north, it's sort of, it's the railroad right away between BrewDog and our site. I'm, I'm, from what I'm understanding, there's, there's really little, little use for that because the, some, some of the industrial properties across the way are, are, are either for sale or, or, or not going to be used as industrial property. So that spur. You know, that's, and that's a pretty big opening that if, depending on how that property works out, that, that could be another. If, if, if the boardwalk is a, you know, public boardwalk along the river, that'd be another big opportunity to create access to the river. And then also as you, as you come up Carter, you can see when you're driving, you will get to sort of see over the lower building on this, on the south to the river. So there'd be some visual connection and, you know, potential with that railroad spur, you know, more actual physical walkable connection.
Well, maybe to Freddie's comment, you, you have that pedestrian connection to the boardwalk through your property. Maybe, maybe it's elevated, you know, giving you a sense of entrance.
I think to that, what I'm, all I'm saying is too, like with the building edges, you know, it's, it's very, they're very hard edges, right? With hard corners. You know, and if it was designed in a way where it pulled people through the site. You know, and that's always the danger about, you know, private development on waterfront property. You know, it's always the signal that it sends, but the way it's designed could really help to mitigate that feeling of, you know, we don't belong there. You know, if I'm biking down there or walking with, you know, my family, we're going along there. Oh, wow, beautiful units. But it can't send the message that you only can come in this vicinity if you have a unit here. You know, so it's, it's very important that that message is not sent. And with the Vision for the Valley, that was another thing that we wanted to be very certain of with respect to the whole notion of, you know, public parks and public spaces. You know, being honored and celebrated somehow, along with development.
Terrific conversation. And I just want to share a few more thoughts because we, we've actually been having this conversation for many months. A few things that we've done is we've separated the two buildings from somewhere around only twenty feet to over fifty feet and we put in a paver type system to make it very open, feel much more like a, a plaza or piazza in, in Europe to try to increase walkability there. On the right side of the building, we have a sidewalk going all the way to the, the riverfront as well. And on top of that, we are hoping and are working on, but it's going to take much more than just us to get that railroad line to turn that even into a running path or bike path or a combination of both. Because that will really enhance the walkability around this entire area. And then on the other side of our property, there will be some sort of access over at the Great Lakes Brewery. But as we talk about the land over there, the topography, as, as you're driving down Carter Road, you'll certainly see over our building, see the river, see the expanse of the river, and you'll see down Carter Road as the river bends. There's about twenty feet at least of, of topography going from the, the neighbor to, I guess, what is it, the the west here, all the way to where that entrance is to the driveway. It's a very steep slope with a a long retaining wall, the Godzilla wall, as everyone here locally knows. And but we, we certainly are trying to make this very inviting, very open. We've, we have that nice big hole. And we've even taken out some of the trees to make it feel very walkable. And then we could put some back in that don't hurt any type of viewpoint or make people feel like they're not welcome. It's because the sharp edges, that also is actually something we've, we've discussed and the, the architecture here has been pretty fascinating. We've been asked and we really like the idea of putting much more of a warehouse district type feel here. It fits very well with the flats. Then if you look at what we put on along the river, we've also been challenged with trying to embrace the curvature of the river. So the part that's closed up closer to the river, which we were asked to enclose it, not create a suburban feel, make it feel a lot more urban. We also are bending along with the river, which you'll see in some other large cities where they try to add to the walkability along the river. But any more ideas along this, we can only make the project better. It's, it, it's really fun and interesting to work with this property. It has its challenges and many of them. But trying to do both, the walkability and curvature of the river with the, the hard industrial and, and warehouse district feel of these sharper corners. So there you have the sharp corner. And then if you go, we don't have the print panoramic going around, but yes, as you go there, the building bends and curves along with the river, especially on the side all the way by, by that bridge that hopefully one day becomes a running trail.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we also had Jim Havillan had his hand raised for quite a while and now Councilman Slife as well.
Okay, since Jim's had his hand raised for a long time.
Mr. Chairman, to the commission, thank you very much. I just have a couple of points that I would like to express. First of all, to, to Director Collier, absolutely, we are actively, and this is confirming what Mr. Mendelson said, working with the Flats Industrial Railroad to get that land under control. Also, Mr. Mendelson and his team have worked with Flats Ford and adjacent property owners to make sure that we can maximize, maximize access to the river. And so we are, we are very pleased with the interaction we've had. To Commissioner Curry's point, the land is owned by the Thunderbird team, Alfred Geis and his team. They are actively involved in conversations with Flats Ford, the Vision for the Valley team on making sure that that water access does occur. So that is a plan right now. They have bought into the idea and working with us. So that who, that is who has control of the real estate. And that right now, that would continue the access from BrewDog, the Avian Building, all the way south through Great Lakes Brewing Company's property. So hopefully that addresses your, your question there. And again, I just wanted to state that Flats Ford has reviewed this with Mr. Mendelson and his team and our economic And again, I just wanted to state that Flats Ford has reviewed this with Mr. Mendelson and his team at our Economic Development Committee, as well as our board, and we're strongly supportive of the um schematic design that's being, you know, recommended for approval today. So hopefully that answers some questions.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilman.
Uh, Jim covered it. I just want to, um, I wanna underscore that I, I, I see the value and potential of the Flats Industrial Railroad uh becoming a multi-use path. That's not because I have it out for railroads and um flip about their value, but in this specific instance, I, I just can't imagine that they're going to continue to maintain and operate a, uh, the Shoreline Railroad. So if there's anything that the city can do to hasten that, um, I think that we should be fully supportive and and helpful in that effort.
Thank you, Councilman. Commission members, this is for uh schematic approval?
Uh, I move approval, um, and I just wanna state that um, I do like that this might set the bar for twenty-five to thirty feet along the waterfront, and I know this is not for this project, but me thinking to sort of state clearly for the public and those here that um, any projects that come in down here that don't have this, gonna have a hard time getting approval. So, thank you for that.
I, I, I have a question, just sort of piggyback on Freddie's point about access. What's the name of this project? Is it Seven Hills? Superheroes, I'm sorry. In my opinion, that exudes exclusivity. In my opinion, it sounds like signature at Soul, and nothing against Soul Knights, but um, just a thought, I just, words are important, and I think it, it, you know, I don't know how much thought's gone in that, and I'm not trying to demean what you put into it. I just think the name has, has, it just doesn't feel good to me. Thank you.
Can I get a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion. Uh, one, I, I think the uh project is coming along beautifully, and I really enjoy the waterfront that you have there, and it's a good thing that Alfred is the one that owns it, so I know he's got the city best in mind, so. Uh, Michael Call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing. Diane, are you there? Luca.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Flight.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, good luck, looking forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
So Brandon, can you open up your microphone now?
Yes, I apologize to everyone, uh, my computer froze and lost audio, so.
That's okay. Um, Brandon, uh, is there anyone else gonna speak besides yourself?
No, unfortunately, Michael Panzica is in flight right now, so he's unavailable, but uh I'll, I'll be representing the project.
Okay, uh, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, before you get going, um, we did get letters from both uh Duck Island Neighborhood and Tremont West. Um, and I know there's some, um, or at least there were people from uh the neighborhood on the line, so I will open it up if they wanted to make comments too. But go ahead with your presentation, please.
Please, thanks, uh, everyone for their patience. Again, apologize for the uh, the technology issue. Uh, this project, uh, we, we've been working with city planning, uh, for a handful of months, uh, uh, working on, uh, a relatively vacant site, uh, in, uh, the gateway, if you will, at the Duck Island. Um, I will say to the process that we have gone through, uh, design review. Uh, last night, we did attend, um, uh, Tremont West Economic Development, uh, meeting. Um, and we will be in attendance at the Duck Island Block Club on Tuesday. Um, I know that, uh, there was a lot of comments, uh, made by the residents that we are, uh, willing and and uh, wanting to work through, uh, and going through. Unfortunately, with schedules, we, we went through design review before being able to have that just because of, of timing of meetings, but we are committed to, to working with them, uh, as we progress uh, through the process and and evolve the design. So, uh, the project's located on Abbey Avenue between Twentieth and Nineteenth. If you wanna go to the next slide, it is a relatively vacant site. Abbey Avenue's Corner Market, uh, is on, uh, the corner of West Twentieth. Obviously, there's a significant amount of development uh, and and excitement going on in this area. Um, and with a, a small town, a townhome project directly to the north on, on Twentieth, uh, to the site which we'll highlight shortly, proximity to West Side Market, Waterford Bluff, uh, Harbor Bay's intro. Uh, the Metro Park's red, uh, Red Line Greenway, and then Abbey Park directly adjacent to the site, um, next slide. As just some context of the site itself, as I mentioned, most of the houses and and other, uh, buildings and structures have been demolished on the site except for the Corner Market, currently being used as the staging zone, uh, lot for Waterford Bluff's construction. And then obviously, uh, to the direct west, uh, we have Morgan's, uh, uh, industrial facility, um, directly adjacent to the site, um, next slide. The project consists of a mixed density, um, use, uh, a large apartment building, five stories, uh, hundred and twenty-four units, and then two townhouse buildings. Um, those townhouse buildings will be for rent, uh, part of the apartment building structure. Um, the intent and the design, uh, behind the project, um, was ensuring that we kind of enmeshed all, uh, uh, the parking internal to the site, um, leaving, uh, street activation of, of living and, you know, uh, and window from it, um, along West Twentieth, West Nineteenth, and Abbey. Um, there's a small outdoor recreational area, uh, directly to the north on Nineteenth that we feel is appropriately placed across from the park. Um, there has been a lot of dialogue between the orientation of this building and the desire to, from the development team to keep the building oriented on Abbey and Nineteenth, um, and away from, uh, the industrial, um, site. Uh, and then also with the fact that the townhomes to the north, uh, will be under construction here, uh, in the spring, I believe, um, continuing that, uh, formwork and and design. Um, I know the residents have asked us, uh, to take a look at a couple of their options, uh, we're open to it. In fact, this morning, we started doing some of those, uh, mapping, and we'll continue to, uh, look at those as, as possible solutions. Next slide. Um, for a ground floor plan, uh, all of, uh, the units on the ground floor are either, uh, full-in, uh, secure garage um, and or walk-up, uh, scenario, um, of the stoop. Um, so there'll be a lot of activation and opportunity for a street scape, uh, along the perimeter, and then a, a large, um, amenity area on the ground corner of, uh, West Nineteenth and Abbey. Uh, there was a significant discussion about the inclusion of a commercial component to the project. After discussions with the development team, uh, we've, uh, included a five-hundred-square-foot micro tenant, uh, retail tenant opportunity for a small coffee shop, juice bar, um, smoothie shop, um, or maybe a grand, but go market, obviously, um, Abbey Market will be going away with this project, there might be a need um, for that as well. So, um, that would be directly adjacent and a part of a feature that would be both public and private. Um, next slide. And so, apartment building, total five stories, next slide. Three-and-a-half-story townhomes, structures, um, a nine-unit and a seven-unit, and then, uh, as you look at the renderings. Um, the building, uh, will have a, a fair amount of glazing on the corner of, of Abbey and Nineteenth. Um, we're placing, uh, uh, an opportunity for, uh, public art, uh, a wall mural, um, on the corner of the building. We felt like it would be, uh, an eye-catching opportunity because of its entry point into, um, you know, West Twenty-Fifth and, uh, West Side Market. If this rendering was turned just a little bit more, you would see, um, the tower of the, uh, West Twenty, uh, of the West Side Market right there. We feel it'd be kind of an opportunity, um, for that. What you're seeing here isn't necessarily what the final, uh, artwork would be. We'd engage and and commission an artist to, to work with, to, to determine, but we wanted to showcase that. Here's a view back, uh, at Nineteenth, looking down Smith Court, and you can see the townhomes lining the street with the apartment building. Next slide. Here's a view, um, of the other side of, uh, Smith Court and Twentieth, um, with the apartment building in the background. And then I think last week, we just touched on the, uh, materials of the building. Um, through design review, we were asked to take a look at other materials. Uh, we changed out some, uh, CMU and other materials into, uh, a utility brick, um, utilizing some, uh, corrugated metals, um, and then also some more residential-style, uh, lap, party lap siding and, uh, concrete siding material. And you can see some context of the elevations, um, in relation to the adjacent. And then I think we have a landscape plan, conceptual landscape plan, and then I think the last slide is just, uh, what the original renderings were submitted to. Design review, uh, with approval, with connection. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Commission members first, any questions? Maurice, do we have anyone with their hand up?
Corey Rudin.
Go ahead, please.
Corey Rudin, Executive Director of Tremont West, uh, thank you for your time today. Um, I want to, first of all, express the community's excitement for the development, and this product, uh, this block has sat empty for quite some time, so there's a general excitement for, uh, this project moving forward. Uh, I also appreciate the developers' time, especially last night, where they did meet with the Economic Development Committee of Tremont West. Additionally, they're meeting on Tuesday with the, um, Duck Island Block Club, and they've been so far receptive to input from that, as well as the Near West Design Review. Uh, there are a few concerns that I'd like to make sure are put on the table, um, early, because I know that they're looking to come back, um, relatively shortly, probably in January, February, uh, to, for final approval. Uh, the major concerns are the lack of retail, uh, and the five-hundred-and-fifty square feet uh, was a good addition that came out of the Near West Design Review process, but I think that, uh, looking at more retail along that, uh, frontage, uh, could be very important. Uh, especially considering that the neighborhood really feels that this is the center of the community, and as it, as many people move back and forth between Tremont and Ohio City, that this is a heavily-traveled corridor that calls for something very, very special. Um, massing across from Abbey Park was a big topic of discussion. Uh, they really, uh, most comments are that flipping the West Twentieth side, townhomes to the West Nineteenth side would be, uh, more appropriate for the neighborhood context, uh, and allow for a step down as it goes into the more residential fabric of the neighborhood. Uh, questions about traffic flow, all of this is loading off of Smith Court, which is a one-way alley leading from West Twentieth to West Nineteenth Street. West Nineteenth is also where Abbey Park is, adding a hundred and forty units with only one, uh, outflow point uh, across from the park and three right turns in order to get to Lorraine Carnegie Bridge. And across that bridge into downtown is a concern. We think that there's a really easy solution of, uh, punching out onto West Twentieth Street, allowing, and and it could be right turn only, but allowing for a lot of that congestion to be taken off of the park and go right onto West Twentieth and, uh, to locations in Ohio City and, uh, and downtown. And then, uh, finally, there was, uh, general concerns over the des- design and the material selection, feeling that this was, uh, maybe an early iteration, which I believe the architect did discuss with the committee, um, that, that this wasn't going to be the final, but, um, that, that because of the prominence of this corner, uh, the, the community is concerned that it is something that stands up to the test of time for, for many, many years and is an attractive addition. Um, the, there was comments that the townhomes seemed like a really, uh, really well-done and and appropriate, and the, the apartment building, they would like to see a little more design considera- consideration, and maybe that the materials were too busy. Um, I'm not an architect, uh, there was a number of architects on that call. Uh, so there was back and forth, but they did appreciate, uh, that, uh, that there, that Brandon uh, discussed the early iteration, that there would be final, that these weren't final, there would be, uh, there would be changes to that, and he was willing to take into all those considerations and certainly knows how to speak the language. So, uh, those are my, my comments for now. Again, I appreciate, uh, the developers going to the community and having those conversations. I, I think that the Duck Island Block Club, uh, quickly moved to survey their community and pinpoint issues that, um, that they saw and, and summarizing, uh, those. I think Elaine is on the call, as well as David LaSalvia, uh, I would, uh, if, if they would like to speak to any of those issues, I see Elaine, Elaine's, uh, hand is raised, but I appreciate your time. And I just wanted to make sure we got these comments in early. Thank you.
Go ahead, Elaine.
Yeah, good morning, or good afternoon, I guess it's still morning. Good morning, Commission members, Director Collier and others on the call. So I'm Elaine Baroski, and I'm one of the co-chairs of Duck Island Block Club. Um, with me is David LaSalvia, also a member of the Block Club. You should have received an email from me last night, um, it contains a letter from our Block Club and a summary of the survey we conducted. Um, due to the fact that the review of this project, we feel occurred very quickly, and prior to our ability to bring everybody together in a meeting. And so we proactively distributed an online and paper survey, and I think the importance is to see why, why we're here, is that we distributed to a hundred and ninety-eight residents. Um, and as of this morning, a hundred and twenty-six have started the survey, a hundred and sixteen have already completed it. The survey just went out three days ago. That's a nearly sixty percent response rate, so this is a highly invested, um, area for us. But first and foremost, I just wanna say overall, residents are very pleased to see that this empty lot is finally being developed. Many have viewed it as an eyesore for many years, including when it was a, a holding lot for a four-story, uh, dirt pile, um, to accommodate the building of the Stoneley Development. So people are pretty, you know, interested in seeing something happen. However, we've also had, um, expectations for the site based on the Duck Island Plan that was adopted in two thousand and fourteen, and what we were told when we were asked to vote on the changes in zoning for the space a couple of years ago. Um, we are expecting a mixed-use property, including residential and retail, and this is particularly important because, um, the current plan does eliminate Abbey Market. And this market is relied upon by many of our residents, especially our older residents in the neighborhood. But, and since this is the focal point of our neighborhood, we expect the development to, to really align with the aesthetics of our neighborhood, and hope that the developers, and we believe this is the case, will see this as an opportunity to make a statement, um, in our little neighborhood that really links Ohio City to Tremont. So, as shown in the survey results that she received, the overwhelming concerns are very similar to what Corey has mentioned. First is the lack of retail. We understand now that there has been an inclusion of a five-hundred-square-foot micro retail. We'd like to hear more about this and what this is gonna include. Uh, we really do think it's important that it provides affordable staple foods for neighbors who have relied on this market for years. Um, other things are coffee shops. We've asked our residents what folks want. Um, I think a coffee shop or something of that nature would also be, um, uh, desired. The second large area is not surprising, um, that this is a large rental-only property that has eighty-four parking spots for a hundred and twenty-four par- apartments, not, not talking about the townhouses. Um, there's no guest parking and no accommodations for ride-share, which will have an impact on the streets around it. It also has one exit, and if you aren't familiar with this area, one exit and one entrance on a one-way, very narrow, single-lane alley of Smith Court. Um, we think it can be obviously adjusted, but there's a lot of activity going into this space, and it really does need to be looked at. We would like to ask that a traffic and parking study be conducted and ask the city to consider, uh, as Corey mentioned, the addition of a right-only exit, um, off of West Twentieth, which would allow folks to then just head right off to the bridge or east on Lorraine. Um, and also, as a reminder, Abbey Park is heavily used by residents and visitors throughout the year. Um, and we currently have nearly thirty children under the age of ten that live just in the part of that neighborhood around the park. So, you know, traffic and parking around that space isn't just an aesthetic thing, it is also a safety issue, and also accommodating those who are coming to the park, um, to play basketball and to have picnics, et cetera, which, um, happens every weekend, um, in our neighborhood. Thirty are concerned focuses really on the aesthetic and the size of the apartment building. I really don't think that, that the visuals of it are not, um, accurate as much to see a five-story building um, next to the tallest buildings in our neighborhood, which neighbors already think are too tall, uh, is quite jarring. Um, I think residents really like the design and the inclusion of the townhomes. However, the apartment building, um, which is considered, you know, five stories and, and some considered uninspired, up against West Nineteenth is jarring. Residents refer to it in our survey as a prison, imposing, towering, like an apartment that you put on a highway in the suburbs. So we would, and this, we're not trying to be offensive, we really are trying to just, to motivate the architects to consider perhaps flipping the site or revising it in a way so more of the townhouse houses face the residential part of the neighborhood, so that the height differential and the design better align with our visual aesthetics. And so in summary, before I'm gonna turn this over to Dave, we do wanna say that our leadership joined the call last night, and we had the opportunity to speak with both, um, Mr. Panzica and Mr. Klein, who's on the phone. And based on that conversation, we are very hopeful that we're gonna be able to work together. Um, they will be coming to our, our block meeting on Tuesday. We'll hope it goes well. Um, we have a history of very vocal residents, so hopefully they got a lot of it out in the survey, so it'll go smoothly. We have a history of very vocal residents, so hopefully they got a lot of it out in the survey, so it'll go smoothly. However, due to our experiences in the past, we do ask that the planning commission please take in consideration our feedback and our concerns before giving final approval of this project. So Dave, would you like to add anything more to my comments?
David?
I know, we lost him.
We lost him?
Yeah, I think the one thing Dave wanted to bring up is that we've been, one of the things we're a little concerned about is that the landscaping that you see in these visuals are really not very accurate. And so, David, you there?
I'm there.
Okay, go ahead, Dave.
Sorry about that technology. Yeah, we, not only, thank you again for letting me speak. We had a really productive meeting last night with Brandon and Michael, and I really do appreciate their their willingness to step back and look again at the plans. A couple of different things that that I wanted to point out as I was looking through the plans is one of the things that's important for for the neighborhood is our trees. I started to look at that and realize that the rendering that we have may not be really in in reality what we're looking at or what will be the future for this this project. If we could go to slide number 17, can you go to slide 17 for me?
David, if I can interject, I know where you're getting at this. And yes, the Abbey Avenue street frontage is showing tree trees that we do not presently have in our landscape plan currently. We are adding a total of eight new street trees. There are only three street trees in this entire block, three of which are completely butchered to the point where there's a V cut through a power line. And half of them are overgrowing the street. So we are adding eight street trees in this project, but the rendering does show some ghosted trees on the Abbey, the Abbey frontage that we would like to try to integrate. And we're going to look into that or at least get something that's a little half-scale of that. But the rendering does show, you know, I'll say a pretty massive trees along Abbey that currently.
That's what I was, that's what I was sort of getting at. In order to break up the look of this, you know, for somebody who's looking at a plan and sees these large trees sort of breaking up the facade, in reality, if they're using ornamentals, trees, these trees are probably not going to be much more than two stories, you know, maybe three. But it really depends on the tree lawn size. I know that in Abbey, there's only four foot available. And so at most, we're, they're going to have a small, if they can plant anything on there. I know that three feet is a no, no plant zone according to the the city's urban forestry. So I just want that as a perspective, especially to bring to the Block Club so that we can look at truly what might be the reality of how this looks from many different angles. Second of all, I just wanted to address, I'm trying to understand the entry, the entry and exit gate that is on the alleyway on Smith Court, I think that's in number four, slide number four.
It's shown that graphically is a pivot, but it would be a sliding gate.
It would be a sliding gate. That helps. Thank you very much. And just as a personal note, the use of public art on the side of a building, I I have problems with that only only because of, it can be contentious, it may not last. We want this building to look good on its own. So many other projects in the area like Tinnerman Lofts or Worthington Yards have used public art within the building to line hallways, a great opportunity for local artists to show what they can do. I I would ask that you think about just not necessarily using art on the side of a building to enhance it. Let the building stand for itself. So those are my comments and I do appreciate that.
Thank you, David. And just so you know, this is for schematic approval only. You're going to have an opportunity to hang out with Brandon for a while and kind of go through all these things. But we really appreciate what you sent us last night and very well done, by the way. Very well, easy to read and get through. So thank you very much. Commission members?
This is Commissioner Member Curry. I would be open to moving for schematic approval, but with two conditions. Well, maybe three, but two conditions. First condition is I agree about the retail. I think it's essential and when this comes back, it needs a much more substantive plan for that as was outlined by the residents. Two, I do agree that the design is a, is a little bit uninspired and does need a kind of more thought to it. So I I would ask the design team to really step it up in terms of, and I don't mean just colors and materials, the design itself really does need to hold this corner in a kind of much more exceptional way. And three is to continue to work with the community through the process before you come back because I think this is a situation where everybody's excited about the project and wants to work together to have a win-win with the developers and the community. So I think the idea of working together and coming back to us will help to get the final approval. So those are my three conditions.
Just before, before we vote, David, yeah, I do want to make two comments. One, and you know, I, this is general for all projects, not to this, but you know, anecdotally, I joke around that 80% of the job of a councilperson is really just about trees. And I work really diligently to get replacement tree lawn trees in the board that I represent. And I'm frequently denied by urban forestry for any litany of reasons. And one of the main ones is that they are avoiding planting trees under power lines, which used to be common practice and leads to that V of death and that there's a preference for tree locations that don't have that condition. I bring that up because I Google Street Map this location. All three frontages have a power line directly above that narrow sidewalk. And and I think, Director, we still need to have a presentation from urban forestry about their requirements of planting trees in the right of way just because I believe that the landscape plans that we end up looking at or approving or even just the conceptual renderings end up being a little disingenuous. And as we have a established goal of increasing our tree canopy in the city and we routinely see these projects with interior lots where there's not trees and we rely on the exterior in order to plant trees. And I figured that when everything comes out in the wash, that we're accomplishing, we're not accomplishing what we're intending to accomplish at the onset. So if we could set that up for 2022 early in the year, I think it's a really important point of consideration for this commission, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you very much, Charles. Great comments.
My other, my other comment, you know, I spoke with Councilman McCormick about this project. His, his comments, I think, echoed a lot of, you know, he reiterated back what he was hearing from residents. He didn't come with a specific ask of me, but I guess the question back to my colleagues, you know, there's conceptual, schematic and final. And and I think that conceptual approval is very obvious. People are very eager to see the site developed. But given the number of suggestions and asks of, you know, the development corporation and the community, are we really schematically approving this? I guess I'm wondering if we are only at conceptual approval. Are the requests to go back to the drawing board so fundamental that what we're going to see in final is going to be just drastically different than what's being presented? Do we need to table this as an alternative?
I would be open to amending my motion for conceptual approval with the same conditions if the commission was okay with that. I think that's appropriate, Charles. Thank you.
Okay, so so we have an amendment to the motion to do conceptual. Is the second or in favor of?
Yes, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion second for conceptual approval and.
Can I ask a couple of questions before it gets voted on?
Sure.
And I apologize, I know we're short on time and.
Okay, we, can we just call the vote and have?
Well, the reason.
Because I have to, I have.
I apologize, the only reason I want to, the developer wasn't able to be on the call and and the retail discussion is a very important discussion that from a, from a, a development perspective, he would make sure that I conveyed this thought. Originally, the project had zero retail. He currently owns multiple multifamily projects similar to this that does have a commercial component, which those storefronts are relatively sitting vacant free in much more desirable locations. He's willing to, you know, add this micro retail tenant. He thinks that it would be an amenity of the building and it could be an attribute to the community. We've set up for some future storefronts to be able to, if there's success in this, to add additional. But I I'm nervous about the approval kind of having a condition that we have to have large volume retail.
Well, here, so Brandon, because I can't lose the quorum for the other things. Once you meet with the councilmen and the neighborhood and go back through design review, that'll be flushed out. This is actually just sending you back to flush those things out. It sounds like the neighborhood is very amenable to your development and interested for the best thing for the neighborhood. So I'll just call the question. Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Looker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yeah.
McCray Scott.
Seth.
Mike.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and this for conceptual approval. The next is Bolivar Road Apartment. Apartment, new construction, this is seeking schematic approval. This is 1060 and 1124 Bolivar Road. Who's here for this one?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. You have Andrew Donches from Samara Road, Chris McKeon from Samara Road and Travis Crowder from Dismon Architecture.
Thank you very much. Swearing you in and afterwards when you say I did just say your name. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Andrew Donches, I do.
Travis Crowder, I do.
All right, go ahead, please.
All right, go ahead, please.
And try to make it brief just because I don't want to lose the quorum.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll do an introduction. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good to be back with you today. To remember, we presented the concept for this project on Bolivar Road back in September. We're back to you today seeking schematic approval for the project. We've advanced the design in what we think is a pretty exciting way. We were before the Design Review Advisory Committee yesterday and received unanimous approval of the updated concept. Just to set the context, this project is on Bolivar Road in the Gateway Historic District in between the Stadium District and the Arts District. This is an adaptive reuse of a portion of the existing garage and new construction of a 184-unit multifamily community. On the phone today is Travis Crowder from Dismon Architecture, and I will let him walk the commission through the concept of the project.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, you can just, this is the image of the building to the left. 1020 is the building, the one you see there is the, excuse me, the office building. When you see images to the left, these are all.
Can you speak up? I'm not sure if I'm the only one having a hard time hearing you.
I'm the only one having a hard time hearing you. Okay, can you hear me better now?
Sounds better.
How about now?
Sounds great.
Much better. All right, all right, thank you. These are contextual images of the long Bolivar Road. The picture to the right is the office building that that Samara Road has just recently converted. Take note of the window systems, then the screening. We use some of that and some, you know, as precedent in the existing garage as we were refacing it. You can move on to the next slide. Some adjacent buildings, the Witten Manor Apartments there in upper right-hand corner, the solid brick building. The white building is Ohio Desk and then the Armory down at the end of Bolivar. Next slide, these are some images along Erie Court. The one in the bottom left there you see is the single-story existing garage that we are planning to raise. And then the other two images to the right are the existing parking garage that we plan to keep. Next slide. Okay, this is just some data on the project. As Andrew indicated, we're looking at 184 units. And, you know, we're trying to create that live-work-play environment, making that connection between the stadium area and the Playhouse Square area. Next slide. Just keep in mind from the last, the approval for for concepts, you know, our tasks were to go back to trying to make the pedestrian experience a little bit more vibrant, being a connector between the stadiums and the Playhouse Square District. So that's our intent here. This is our site plan. The building to the left, the parking area, that's the existing parking garage. And then everything to the right of that would be all new. We have a really healthy sidewalk depth on Bolivar Road that we plan to add some additional plannings to. And we haven't really gotten too far into the landscape planning at this point, but some of the comments yesterday from Drac were to look at trees and wells versus the planners that we have. So we're going to explore that a little bit more. We do have two existing curb cuts that we're going to maintain just due to the layout of the parking garage, the existing garage. But we are not planning to put any more curb cuts along Bolivar Road. Some things to really point out here is we are adding retail to make this true mixed use. So there's about 3,300 square feet of retail, as you can see there to the right. And then adjacent to that is the the new lobby to the residents above. Long Erie Court, we don't have the luxury, and this is fine to keep this slide. You can go to the next one there. We don't have the luxury of a deep sidewalk, but we are trying to incorporate some green and planters along there. We are adding one more curb cut to the new portion of the garage. We're also putting bike storage on the the back of the building. The south of the building, I should say, along Erie Court to have that direct access to Erie Court, which is more pedestrian-friendly access into the building. We are looking at a planned parking and creating a unit with the adjacent office building that Samara Road owns. Together with that parking there, we are approximately 200, 363 parking spaces at this time. And we are very comfortable that this will meet, you know, the one-to-one parking for the residents and the necessary parking for any of the retail and the office building. Moving up to the second floor, again on the left, we'll continue up a few floors with the existing parking garage and the new parking garage. The second floor, we start to introduce some, some of the apartment units that kind of wrap the new garage. One thing to note on this floor plan is that we held the residential component on the, on the east side there, on the right side of the plan, back at least 20 feet. That allows us to avoid any fire ratings, allows us to have windows and openings and balconies along there. It also creates this nice patio area. And in the future, any development to the parking lot to the right there, they would have to maintain a separate, similar separation. It would create a nice visual opening and allow for daylight and air movement through. This is moving up another level. Again, this is the last floor of the existing parking garage on the left-hand side there. We have additional half floor of residential units. And this is where we start to have our first amenity deck. One of the things that was brought up last time was about trying to create a better connection to Erie Court. And again, with having very limited sidewalks back there, one of the ideas is to have projections or amenities above that space that would kind of overlook and not necessarily directly tie to the activity on the street, but create some activity back there as well as potential for just enhanced security with more activity around. Next slide. So here you can see the additional amenity space, so it's kind of a split level there where I just pointed out the the pool. We're overlooking that. There's some additional social amenity spaces. To the far left, again, we're pulling the building, the residential component 20 feet back from the existing office building, which does have some windows on the upper floors, so that will allow for daylight there. Also, we have some additional amenity space there. We're looking at dog run and potential spaces for other resident activities like gardening and such. One thing to point out, too, we have select units that have, this is fine to say, we have some balconies inset along Bolivar and along Erie Court. We have them inset there just to keep them out of the right of way. And then along the courtyard areas as well as the the far east sides of the building, we have outboard balconies. These are some sections here, cut through to kind of give you a general feel, the steps, stepped amenity spaces and how we stepped the. stepped amenity spaces and how we stepped the, the residential. We are looking at a podium construction, so it is wood frame over concrete base. The pink is all, the, the pink areas are all the concrete. The three stories to the right, the pink area, that is all the existing parking garage. And to the right of that is the existing office building. See that relationship. Moving to the elevations, we'll start on the bottom, the Bolivar Road elevation. The three floors to the lower light, lower right, excuse me, are the, that's the existing parking garage. And we're trying to reface that with, with new brick where we can and then paint the existing brick. One of the other things that we'd like to do is keep that as an open parking garage concept, open air, to avoid ventilation mechanical systems inside. We are looking at cutting openings on the first floor level there along the street, similar to what the office building has adjacent to us, screening. And then also introducing planners, both inset on the building and then outset along the, closer to the curb line. The upper levels there of that parking garage, we're going to screen the vehicles using a framing system that matches very similar to the, the windows on the office building. And then we start to introduce the palette of the, the proposed residential and retail. The far left there along the street level, the darker areas, that's the retail area with some canopies over top. Just right of that is the main entrance to the parking, or excuse me, the, the residential component into the lobby. And we're looking at creating some vertical elements to help break up the massing, looking at darker corner elements that you can see carry around the building. Again, to create some verticality and break up the massing of the, of the building. One of the things that the committee yesterday brought up to our attention is that they felt like the, the elevations were too busy. There was a lot of activity, maybe a little too dark in some of the colors. So our next step for the final is to kind of pull back on some of the, the changes in the elevations. This is a good look here, too, and maybe lighten up some colors. We would like to try to maintain that wood look feature in there, just bring some, you know, warmth to the, the residential component. We're trying to tie that into some planners and some underside of canopies and things like that at the pedestrian level. This view here shows the amenity space. We feel like the, you know, the southern exposure is gonna be great for this. Again, this kind of overlook of Erie Court and bringing activity to that, that side of the, the building. Next slide. We'll go into a series of renderings that we've prepared. This is looking from the east where the, the facade of the residential is pulled back. We have some opportunities along the, the pedestrian levels, the street levels of the building, along this existing parking lot to do murals. So we're proposing some of that along there. You can see the patio area there with the greenery around it pulled back. And you can start to see some activity there with the retail along Bolivar Road. Next slide. And these are some, just zooming in closer on, on some of the, the activity we're trying to create, the pedestrian experience with some storefronts. Where, we haven't gotten into signage yet, that's something we'll continue to develop for the final approval. But this is, this shows you kind of the enhanced and opportunities here we're creating for, for the retail and the pedestrian experience. This is Long Erie Court, again with the shallow sidewalk, opening up the bike storage area to create some activity there. Again, we have some opportunities for murals along here for public art. So we're gonna continue to explore that and, and look at opportunities there. And then you can see the, the overlooked balconies and things directly above. This is the material palette, again, it's a mix of brick, true brick. We're not looking at any split-facing or anything and then a combination of either metal panels or cement board panels. The mesh for the garages, we're still exploring a little bit, looking at various options. This, this starts to give you a palette we're looking at and we intend to lighten these maybe up a little bit. Next slide. These last few are some before and after of the massing. Again, the, the shows you how the building sits within the context of, of the buildings around it. The next one shows, next slide. You know, deeper into the central business district as the, the taller buildings towards the, the lake start to drop down towards the cemetery, which is a great asset there and is appropriate scale along the cemetery there. And that's pretty much it. Questions, since I moved through it very quickly. These last are just some precedent images that we presented at, at the concept approval. We feel like we, we kept pretty close to, you know, some of these concepts are precedents in the current design.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You won an award for being speedy, too, by the way.
I tried.
Thank you. So, commission members. Questions?
I have a question, David.
Go ahead, Tara.
Hi, this is Tara Petrus, the city's public art coordinator. My question was with regard, first of all, I think this is a beautiful building and I'm glad that you were thoughtful enough to include incorporation of public art, which prompts my question. Are you all the same building owners that owned the building in twenty nineteen? And the reason I ask this is there is some existing public art on the building facade, two murals to engage the theater and progressive field attendees. And I want to make sure that before that building is raised or modified and those murals are removed, that you all have been in contact with the artist because of the Visual Artists Rights Act before you proceed with any demolition or removal.
Tara, I can answer that one. This is Andrew Donches from Samara Road. We, we are the owners and we did commission that artwork and we will be in touch with those artists as part of the process here. Our intent is to save as much of that as we can. If in the sense that we can't, we'll be replacing them in kind with identical versions or something similar.
Okay, I just want to make sure he has time to, to document his murals, however he chooses to, before any raising occurs. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. I, I got a message from Michael. Where are we with our quorum? I'm, I'm looking at the list here. Michael, do we have a quorum?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I believe that Commissioner Curry and Commissioner Fluker have left the meeting. So I, at this point, we no longer have a quorum.
So it's myself, Charles, Denise. Is there anyone else? Cause we need one more person, right?
Is Downing still available? Diane had left earlier.
She's speaking at the city club. And we have two public art pieces to do. Disappointing. So, moving forward, we don't have a quorum to vote on this. I don't expect you guys to come back. I think staff can show the deck. I think you've done a great job. I don't know where the other commission members sit on this, but.
I agree.
Charles, how about you?
I, I think, yeah, I, I agree with you. I, I, I would hate to make them have to sit through another meeting on the seventeenth. But honestly, if they're the way, since this keeps happening, I, I don't want to make a precedent of this. But I, I don't like that we're having to make, you know, the, the public art presentations wait an additional two weeks. I don't know if there's something we can do to, like legally, are we able to kind of vote by email if we look through presentations or something? I, I, I'd be interested in exploring that just because I don't want our, our inability to vote on something to prevent us from getting things over the line.
Well, and, and, and we're close to noon anyhow, which, I mean, there isn't a time for planning commission, but let's think about this. I would say the sense of the planning commission is we're in favor of the schematic design approval. We can take a vote. Staff could actually show it to the rest of the planning commission members that weren't here. If Charles, if you and Denise are fine with it, I'd like to see the public art ones also and, and do the same thing with them because I don't want to keep on dragging these people back.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with it. I just want them to make sure they take into consideration what Tara mentioned about the public art on the building, but otherwise I'm fine.
Yep, and, and we were assured by the developer that they are doing that, so that's good.
Yes.
Okay, so you guys don't have to come back. We will see this deck at the beginning of our meeting. We will take a vote at that point and, you know, planning will email you the approval on that. But keep on moving forward, great project. I love the density there, I love the location, so beautiful job, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate the time.
Okay, so let's go to the public art, the first one.
Thank you, David.
So it's a special presentation of public art, this is Asia Town mural. Go ahead, Tara.
Okay, this, there's actually gonna be two presentations for, one is a mural and the next one is a sculpture, both within Asia Town. The first one is a mural at thirty-one forty-two Superior Avenue. Neither one of these locations is in a design review district, so this is the only body that this will, these two projects will come through. I'm in support of these projects, both artists are Asian-Americans and to have some cultural identity in the neighborhood, I think, is really important for residents of the area and stakeholders to be reflected in the work that they see. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Charis Sane from Midtown Cleveland to go through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara, and thank you for still hearing this presentation. I'll go quickly, I know that, you know, it's the last item. So thank you, Maurice, for scrolling through this first presentation. I just wanted to add, the artist, Irina Wong, is a Cleveland Institute of Art graduate. This is her first mural. She has been involved in several other public art projects. This will be her first, you know, large-scale mural and so we're really excited to use this as an opportunity to uplift her work as well as the connection to the neighborhood. So as you can see, it depicts a number of cultural elements through food and we just love how playful her style is kind of with these caricatures and the movement and style that she offers. So again, this is a draft mural concept. We really wanted to respect the artist and kind of come through this commission with a concept before working with her to refine the, refine the design. We'll note this is, currently there is a sign that says Luxury Nail Supply. That business has moved to a larger location and so we'll be working, we have been working with the property owner to, you know, with this artwork and they have really liked it and we'll work with them for any future signage that might need to replace that sign.
Yeah, we want to back up a couple of slides just so they see examples of her work. I think it was in the second slide.
First slide, I think that is, you know, what her artwork really looks like. So as you can see, incredibly detailed and on a larger scale, it might not be quite as, you know, quite so many tiny details, but I think the spirit of her work will still come through.
And thank you, and Joyce, what that, that slide we had just looked at, that was what was being proposed for this location, right? That was an example, that was the proposal?
That is exactly, that is correct.
Just making sure I'm not confusing things in my goldfish brain. No, I think, I, I mean, obviously, David, I can't make a motion because we don't have the, the quorum, but I, I think that it's, I think these are really impressive and then I think that this new one will be as well.
Yeah.
I do, too.
Great, thank you.
Wish we could have voted.
We do, too. And the next presentation she's doing, local artist Jordan Wong. This particular installation is a sculpture and a free library. So it's not only engaging from a visual standpoint, but also that it promotes literacy as well. And this is a sculpture at fifteen seventy-nine East Thirty-Eighth Street. He's been fundraising to get this done for quite some time and he actually has a, an exhibit at the Akron Art Museum right now that this was a part of. Go ahead, Charis.
Yeah, I mean, Tara, you explained it so well. I think the only things I'll add is we're really honored to be working with Jordan. He's come to us with a couple of different ideas and just really grateful for his generosity and his creativity and just desire to have work in our neighborhood. So this is an example, as Tara mentioned, there's kind of a, a smaller scale prototype that's in his exhibit in Akron. But it will be a very large little free library, so it's five by seven feet high. We will be installing kind of a concrete path since it's on an asphalt parking lot in this location for it to rest on so that it can be secure. And in, we have worked with the property owners here at Asian Town Center to kind of find the most desirable location. We're really excited about the added vibrancy that this has a potential to, to add to the activity that happens within this shopping plaza. You know, for kids coming with their families to go grocery shopping or get food to eat or to the dance studio or art gallery, that this kind of adds to that experience. And I will also add the little free library, the goal for it is that it would hold graphic novels and kind of comics, which is something that is really meaningful to Jordan, to kind of share that spirit with its generations.
Charis, what materials is this made out of?
It is a steel frame, kind of the box is, is steel. And we're working with West Camp Press, West Camp, which is right in the neighborhood on Forty-third Street, I believe. And they are fabricating and then installing.
Out of curiosity, is, is the, is there a plan to kind of have it be almost like a multilingual little library?
Exactly, I think that is certainly part of the intention that there's. Yeah, materials in lots of different languages.
I, I think this one's great, too, David, and I could say anecdotally, my, my toddler, as I make a joke about my goldfish brain, my toddler loves the, the little goldfish pond next, next to this as you walk up. So he'll be excited when this is up and running.
Yeah, it's very cool.
Shout out to Henry.
Last piece actually reminds me of a, a art district in Beijing. And they have some beautiful public art in it. You should take a look at it, it's, it's quite wonderful. So, well, we're gonna see this in the beginning, you don't have to come back. Tara will present it for you and we will let you know that it passes with flying colors because it is beautiful.
Thank you so much. I'll pass it on to the artist.
Thanks, Charis.
Thank you, Commissioner and Tara.
Is that Jim? Okay, we're at the end of the meeting. Freddie, are you still there?
I am, I'm here.
I guess I didn't know that people were gonna be dropping off before noon, e- except I did know that we were losing one commission member because she's speaking at the city club. We lost two more in the process, so.
Yeah, I think the handling of the last couple of cases and hearing them out and then taking the vote in that capacity is legitimate. We're gonna just verify that and I'll circle back to you, Chairman.
Sure, so what's, what's our next meeting's agenda look like?
For the seventeenth, that, that agenda is not fully baked at this point because we still have things that are gonna be coming in.
Sure, okay, because we're done ten minutes after noon.
Yep.
That's not a long planning commission made.
No, you made good time here.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, you made very good.
All right. Well, I understand Diane because she has to speak, but, all right. We'll see you guys in two weeks.
All right, up to you.
Okay.
Thank you so much, guys.